Can do a countdown with you.
All right, I'm here.
Right at seven. So yeah, just let us know when you're ready and we'll catch you.
All right, let's get the agenda up here. We got four minutes by Google. Okay, we got two minutes. Is it, see is YouTube running?
It is.
Okay. So about minute and a half to go. Okay, McCartney, you want to count us in?
Yes, sir. Standby. Ready, Don? Okay, and here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening and welcome to this, the September fourteenth meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
That's Member Monroe.
Sorry, I could not unmute. Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
I hear. Okay, due to feedback and delay with the meeting platforms, I will be reciting tonight's pledge. So please mute your microphones and follow along at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So participating in tonight's meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process we'll be using at this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comments through YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city website and on the agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google form link on the city good website and the agenda were provided to the city council and the public as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting and therefore will not be read into the record. But rest assured, the council members did receive the letters and comments that you made and we have taken them into account. We have read them. So with that, I'm moving on with the meeting. No proclamations and presentations. Onto the citizens forum. These are comment, these are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on items that are brought up this evening tonight. They may be brought up for consideration at a later date. So with that, does the city clerk have any comments for the citizens forum?
Yes, we do. Mayor, City Clerk's office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
The first comment is from Evan Branning. Thank you, council and staff. I would like to ask council to recognize the Sutton family for their great work in providing for our community. They have been offering a variety of free donated food and entertainment items for those in need. Since early in the pandemic, they have been a boon to our city and I believe they deserve to be recognized.
I absolutely agree. I think the Sutton family, their free farmer's market, they were, I was out there recently. There was an ice cream giveaway recognizing a young man who passed away far too soon. But they are a tremendous asset for the community. And so thank you, Mr. Branning, for those comments.
We also have a comment from Lisa Tramovich, public comment from Lisa Tramovich, Astana Way, Livermore. Some good news from Livermore Shakespeare Festival. We've hired Michael Wayne Rice as our first resident director. You may remember him as the director of the 2019 production of Othello at Wentie Vineyards. He is leading the company's new program, Science at Play. We'll be commissioning a new science-themed play that will include scientists of color in the storyline. The commission is $6,000. Information available on our website. And that concludes the public comment on Zoom.
That's fantastic. I've seen Michael Wainwright perform a number of times the Shakespeare's, Livermore Shakespeare Festival. He is wonderful, very, very talented.
I apologize, Mayor. There one just came in as I was speaking. This, this is from Jackie Cotta. And it said, I would like to express my disappointment that the city has spent wasted money on signs and banners telling people to put masks on their face. The city serving as a nanny state is a waste of taxpayer funding. And that's the last one.
Thank you. I, I do remember her comments from the last meeting where she said the numbers do not matter. When almost 200,000 people have died from COVID-19, I believe the numbers do matter. And the science and the experts have shown us that wearing masks is effective. It does reduce the transmission. And that's why the city took action because one of the top city priorities is protecting public health and safety. And that will continue to be a priority. And we asked the people do wear masks not to protect themselves, but to protect those that are most vulnerable in our community. So that, thank you. No further comments on the citizens forum?
That is correct.
I will move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are typically routine in nature and they're usually passed with a single motion. Does anyone wish to comment on any of the items? Or is there any public comment on any of the consent calendar?
No public comment has been received.
Okay, very good. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Rose, seconded by, that was, Councilmember Carling was the second?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That roll call, please.
That's Member Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi. Great. Thank you very much. With that, moving on to public hearings of 5.01. This is a hearing to amend the general plan, South Livermore Valley specific plan and planning, planned unit development of 154 for a small winery changing into a boutique winery. Is the staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's your city manager, Mark Roberts, and I'm going to introduce Assistant Planner Jake Potter, who's going to give us our staff report on this item this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. Tonight, we'll be discussing the proposed amendment to commercial site 4A2 of the South Livermore Valley specific plan. A way of background, site 4A2 is located within the South Livermore Valley, the approximate boundaries of which are shown on the screen. Valley's location and soils are conducive to viticulture and by 1900, the region gained international recognition for its wines. Although the depression, prohibition, infestation, and urban encroachment threatened the region throughout the 1900s, the county's area plan and the city's specific plan and urban growth boundary helped to restore the valley's wine-making prowess. While also preserving agricultural land, the specific plan established limited residential and commercial areas as well. Given stronger market demand, the residential areas are nearly built out. However, given a weaker commercial demand, only three of the 16 commercial sites designated in the specific plan have developed with the wine country in currently under development. Site 4A2 is one of those 16 specific plant commercial sites. It's located along the east side of a railroad generally between Ascalon Lane and Hanson Road. It's directly surrounded to the north, south, and east by permanent open space that will remain and is nearby other commercial sites like site 4B and 5D1 to the south. The largest roadways in the vicinity include Royal Road and Hanson Road and the parcels nearby Ravenswood Historic Site. Commercial site 4A2 is approximately 1.8 acres in size, is currently vacant, is adjacent to the Royal Road Trail and is accessed via driveway along a Royal Road. Currently, a small winery of up to 10,000 square feet in size is allowed on site. The small winery could produce between 5,000 and 10,000 cases of wine a year and could host indoor and outdoor events. The project proposal is to amend the general plan, specific plan, and zoning district to allow for either a small winery, which is shown to scale in red on the screen here, or a boutique winery and residence, again shown to scale, but in green. Pursuant to specific plan policy, the boutique winery would be limited to 5,000 square feet in size, a 5,000 annual wine case production limit, and would not allow for indoor nor outdoor event space. The residence would be limited to a maximum of one story and 4,000 square feet in size, which is shorter in height than and similar in size to adjacent residences. The 170-foot agricultural buffer between the commercial parcel and the subdivision to the east would also remain. Taken together, the boutique winery and residence would occupy a smaller maximum footprint and intensity than the small winery. The image on the screen here is to scale, and although it does not represent the final winery or residence placement or design, it does show the lower intensity of the boutique winery and residence compared to the small winery. Finally, the proposal is for a text amendment only. No physical development is proposed at this time. All future site development would require designer view and approval while future winery development would be reviewed by the planning commission. Ultimately, the proposed text amendment ensures the site would remain wine country commercial and promotes the South Livermore Valley as a unique wine region with a range of winery sizes in conformance with the general plan and the specific plan. The boutique winery and residence would be less intense than the allowed small winery and would be compatible in size, height, and style to adjacent residences. It's for these reasons that the planning commission and staff recommend that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the addendum and approving the general plan amendment and specific plan amendment and introduce an ordinance adopting the development code amendment. So that does conclude my presentation. I welcome any questions you may have, but first I believe the applicant would like to share a few words.
Mr. Ford? Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity to give a brief overview of our application. First and foremost, I, perhaps this application is not as exciting to the public at large as a new Chick-fil-A, but I will do my best to make it as exciting or not, who knows? But just a real quick, brief history on this, this application. Back in approximately 2013, some of the members of the council may have, may recall that there was a request from the Tri-Valley Conservancy for staff to look at all the commercial sites in the South River Valley specific plan to consider potentially broadening the potential uses on the individual sites. Because effectively, there's only about, on average, about one assigned use per each commercial parcel. The council did agree and direct the staff to do an analysis on that. It ultimately didn't happen. Certain projects like the outlet malls and other things took priority. And in 2016, we submitted the exact same application that you have before us, before you rather, and later in 2017, working with staff, we decided to withdraw the application to consider using a conditional use permit as a, as a means and a method to help spur the development of this particular site. That we did have some people interested. There were some potential applicants, but it just couldn't work the way the CUP process was set up. And so we resubmitted this application to allow for the boutique winery use in conjunction in addition to the, the small winery designation as defined in the specific plan. We really do appreciate staff's help and, and shepherding this process through culmination with tonight. But I do want to emphasize what this application is not. This is not a development application. This is not a review of a project. And it's not an analysis of features or styles or architectural, architectural features to be constructed. Those considerations are for another day. If the application is ultimately approved, the planning commission sitting as a design review committee will have the opportunity to review those features of a would-be project. Simply, this is just a text change to allow for a boutique winery designation. What is being proposed is a, is a companion designation along with the small winery, but with a boutique winery designation. This definition or designation is already allowed on at least one other side in the specific plan. So it's not a, something we created out of thin air. It is, it is already defined in, in the specific, South River Valley specific plan. And it will allow for a single-family, single-story residence on a significantly smaller scale to help facilitate the implementation of the specific plan's goals in that to have this area be a destination location for world-class wines. As established in the EIR addendum and the staff report, a smaller-scale boutique winery will allow for less noise, less traffic, minimizing or eliminating potentially events, less parking, less pollutants, less nighttime activities during harvest or other peak wine production periods, and less water and energy use. So at the end of the day, this really does help foster the development of a site that will have less impacts than what is allowed currently. We do appreciate the time. I'm certainly available to answer any questions. And I'll reserve my, any other time that I have for that. So thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do you have any questions for, for the applicant, from the council? Any questions from the council for, for staff? Okay, so the question was asked. So that no events. Okay, so that's good. Okay, in that case, I'm going to open it up, but we did receive several letters on this, but I'll wait until the public comment period is over. City Clerk's office, do we have any public comment?
We do. City Clerk's office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
The first comment is from TBC Laura Mercier. Public comment, public item 501, the Tri-Valley Conservancy, TBC, mission is to promote economically sustainable vineyards and orchards and increase permanently protected biologically diverse open spaces. And the city of Livermore has been one of our highly valued partners in our pursuit of meeting this objective. We believe it supports the intent of both the SLVAP and the SLVSP. The next comment is from Adrian Ott. And it says, please vote no because it sets precedent for all nine commercial parcels. City does not have regulations to manage the loopholes this creates. When planners zoned this 20-plus years ago, the intent was a small production winery for weekend afternoon tastings. Since then, Airbnb and food trucks were invented. Wineries became event centers with bans. Why should we accept enabling a loophole and zoning to allow lodging via Airbnb and restaurants via food trucks when this was never the zoning intent? Lodging and restaurants were never zoned for this parcel because it was close to a neighborhood. Yet this will happen because Livermore has no ordinances for short-term rentals and food trucks. The staff report paints only the best case. There are actually three scenarios. Scenario one, the boutique winery will be a faux winery for personal residents purchased by a rich tech entrepreneur or absent foreign money, even land, excuse me, absent foreign money haven landlord similar to the parcel directly south of this. How does this support the Livermore wine industry? The city, oops, excuse me. The city cannot force a business to produce cases after the property is built. Why enable wealthy home builders to cherry pick commercial zoning for personal residents? E.G. residence is allowed a zero lot line as commercial under the pretense of boutique winery when surrounding residential properties require a vineyard setback. Current proposal allows developers to cherry pick loopholes between commercial, commercial residential, which will cause lawsuits and abuse. Residential zoning should apply to residential home, e.g. setbacks. This needs to be fixed before approval. Air B, scenario two, Airbnb party pad with tasting party room. As mentioned, without short-term vacation rentals and food truck ordinances, this creates a loophole. We have concerns about loud music, noise, vineyard trespassing, and reckless behavior. Temp use permits require 200 feet distance from residential for events. However, our neighbor, our neighborhood is only 170 feet away without laws to protect. Adjacent homes cannot offer Airbnb due to CCNRs. The CCNR should apply to this residence. They are hidden first responder costs. What are the financial impacts of additional police, fire, and emergency crews to attend to party guests excessive and bad behaviors on nine parcels? No analysis in this proposal on the additional cost to taxpayers. Some may say, well, they can do this now with a small winery. Actually, no. People go home at night with a small winery. Without regulation, Airbnb is a loophole altering the zoning of intent. Since Livermore is changing zoning, perhaps it's time to update zoning on the original small winery to disallow food truck, restaurant, event use when close to neighborhoods. When was the expanded definition of winery zoning approved without due process in the community? Scenario three, best case in staff report. How many people have the financial means, ability, and will to run a boutique winery in today's competitive wine industry? Consider the odds. We urge you to vote no on this proposal. Let's get this zoning right because there's no second chance. And then the next comment is from Jay Piper. We see no benefit to the city or its residents to revise this plan. This revision will only have benefit for the investor who will flip the property and be gone. We bought our home with the understanding the property was owned for only a small winery, which would have limited use hours and would complement the city's wine country theme. Adding a residence comes with extended activities and potential for residential parties, noise disturbances to the current homeowners. Would you want this if you lived in the homes adjacent to the property? Thank you, Jason Piper. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
No comment.
Is there YouTube?
No comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. Oh, hang on a second. Let me, let me get the hands up here.
I'll raise mine. What the heck?
Okay, Councilmember Coomer.
Well, I'm curious about these, the, the, the notes for the public about the residence and Airbnb and all that. Is the residence to be used as a residence for the owner of the vineyard or the, the winery? That's what I presumed from reading the report and not available as a rental for somebody. Mr. Ford, maybe you can explain that to me.
Mr. Coomer, certainly the intention is to support the creation of this winery whereby the costs are prohibitively expensive. When you got to live in place A and build a winery in place, place B. Similar to the Alameda County and the Alameda, in the South River Valley area plan, the, as a matter of right, the zoning allows for a residence and a winery. Napa, Paso Robles, they, most of those locations all allow for a residence and a winery. It's kind of like a live-work situation. So the purpose is, is to support the financial incentive to create your own winery while being able to live on-site as well. And frankly, I think how, if you are living there, the chances of the upkeep and the maintenance of the property are going to be better than if you were either an absentee owner or you didn't otherwise live there. So yes, is the short answer to your question.
I would agree with you. Thank you. Thank you for that answer.
Councilmember Monroe.
So I, I am curious about the thought about loopholes. Look to me like it was a fairly minor change that would not change. I'm not seeing whether these loopholes are coming. Could you please explain? Or explain why they aren't there?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what loopholes are, what the definition of loophole is as it relates to this particular application. I don't see any loopholes at all, honestly, from my perspective. It's simply allowing an either or instead of just one. A small winery in the code is defined as a operation that produces a minimum of 5,000 cases. 5,000 cases of wine is a big producing winery in the grand scheme of things. If you compare different wineries in the valley. And so adding the alternative use of a boutique winery where it's 100 to up to 5,000 max, not the minimum, a max. It reduces the scope. It reduces the impacts to the neighborhood and the property. We're looking at a smaller impact. So loopholes, I'm just not, I don't, I, I don't know what the answer to that question is.
Sure. And I appreciate your answer and I should have been more specific. I mean, I got more information than I, I was looking for, so I appreciate that. I'm also wondering if Mr. Potter could address it, though.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I think the, the concern was of a couple of things. The first was with respect to setbacks. And so, you know, the, the residence on commercial site 4A2 would have to conform to all of the setbacks required on all of the commercial sites throughout the specific plan. No changes are being proposed to any of those setbacks. And the 170-foot buffer would be unchanged between the commercial site and the subdivisions. In terms of, I think there was another, one of the other concerns was, I think, a loophole with respect to something like, you know, an Airbnb or, or food trucks or events of, of that sort of thing. You know, in this case, the small winery that's currently allowed today would be allowed outdoor and indoor event space. In the case of a boutique winery, it is not permitted outdoor or indoor event space. It is permitted a wine tasting room, in which case, you know, wine sort of tasting events directly related to and, and in the, the wine tasting room would be allowed. But any type of event, you know, any sort of wedding or, or party. But any type of event, you know, any sort of wedding or, or, or party or anything like that would require a temporary use permit. And, you know, the, the same goes for any type of, you know, type of, type of food truck or any other type of, of, of use of that nature.
And as far as the house goes, 4,000 square feet, you know, for me, it seems pretty large. I think I made that comment before. What was the, how was that designated nation chose, chosen?
Yeah, so staff took a look at the properties to the east that were the closest to the site. And the square footage of those residences was approximately 4,000 square feet. You know, after the, the neighborhood meeting, staff heard there was a desire from the community to have, you know, a single family residence that was compatible with the adjacent, adjacent neighborhood. And so we established that maximum 4,000 square foot size based on sort of the fabric of the existing neighborhood.
So if they decided to have an Airbnb or something, you know, some sort of rental like that, that would be similar to what would could take place in the surrounding neighborhood as well. Wouldn't that be the case?
That is correct. And also, you know, the, the residents would still have to, all activities within the residents would still have to comply with the general plan, specific plan standards with, you know, relation to noise, relation to lighting. Same thing with the municipal code standards as well.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Monroe, this is Community Development Director Paul Spence. Just to note that if the council wanted to be more restrictive on rentals through Airbnb, you could do that through the plan development zoning.
If you want. No, I appreciate that. I was more interested in the fact that this seems to conform with the surrounding neighborhood. So what I'm hearing actually is that the desire is to make this a more restricted space than the actual resident residential spaces surrounding it. And I guess I'm not understanding why that would be the case.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner, followed by Councilmember Carling.
Hey, thank you. I wanted to build on the question that was just asked by Councilmember Monroe. I mean, I'm, do we at this point indicate that the, whether it is or not our sense as to whether we would want to prohibit the music and the rentals in the food trucks? Is that something we need to specify now? Or you're saying we would deal with it later or not we, but some future council member? So I'm inclined actually to want to deal with our intent now with respect to changing this zoning. And that's my thought. So is, is that something I think Mr. Spence indicated that we could indicate at this point? Is that right?
Yes, you have a plan development zoning here, we could, the council adds an amendment, we could add a restriction.
Okay, so I, I think what I heard Mr. Ford say is the way to summarize it is less is more, that this is a less intense use. But I think what we, personally, I would like to also indicate that it's our preference or whatever we, the word is, that we, that we really affirm that less is more and that we don't think about this as some kind of events center that would annoy the adjacent neighbors.
So Vice Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And as Jake Potter noted to you, a boutique winery does not have the same attributes as an event center and could not be operated as one currently under your existing general plan and zoning. The specifics of, for example, could you have a food truck ever on site? Or could you ever have a wine tasting event that might have some sort of recorded music with it? We would leave those sorts of conditions traditionally up to when you're actually looking at an application. As you know, the wine business is extraordinarily difficult. As has been noted, and we have been, we've been at this now for two decades. And at least having some modest amount of activity centered on essentially the tasting and selling of wine, I think is critical to the overall use. It is clear that you will have fewer and smaller and less related to ancillary activities with a boutique winery because that's how it's defined and how it's required. The complete prohibition of ever having any outside food or any essentially recorded music of any kind, I think, would be at this point, sort of a crippling set of conditions. And I think you've got another opportunity when you actually have an application through design and conditions at that particular point to be extremely specific about number and type of even these extremely small scale events. But of course, as we all know, this was going to be a much larger, more intensive use. 10,000 case winery is a, a big winery for us in, in South Livermore. It would be one of our largest, except for Concanon and Winti. And so this is a smaller event, but a smaller project. But I would, at least at this point, I think your staff would recommend that the conditions that we have in place are adequate and we have the additional ability to condition further when we have an application in front of us.
Well, thank you for that. And I certainly understand the wineries were, you know, having difficulties surviving even before the pandemic and especially now. But I, I just want to somehow acknowledge that what Mr. Ford was saying, and as I said, is less is more. And that this is a less intensive use than currently permitted. And just want to make sure that that's our intent.
That is our intent, and that is actually what the regulations require.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. So I appreciate the comments. I actually did a Zoom meeting with several of the residents living to the east. So I think I have maybe a better sense of what Mr. Odd meant by loopholes. I mean, I think his point was that when the South Livermore specific plan was written back in the 90s, we didn't know about food trucks and Airbnb. Well, we might have known about food trucks, but we didn't know anything about Airbnb. And I think that's what they're concerned about as much as anything. Is this is going to turn into an Airbnb kind of facility? And I think, I thought I heard when Debbie was reading the comments that the C C Rs in the area in which these folks live do not permit Airbnbs now. Did I hear that correctly? And so I think the point was is that could we prohibit this residence for being an Airbnb just like there under with the C C Rs they have? Did I hear that correctly?
You did receive testimony this evening, again, Mark Roberts, your city manager. You received testimony to that effect. Obviously, the city does not enforce C C and ours. So that is the difference. But as your community development director did note, that if you did want to prohibit short term rentals from the residential use here, you could do that through your amendment to your application this evening through adding a condition.
I'd certainly be in favor of that, as Vice Mayor mentioned as well. I do think it's important to point out that this is, as Vice Mayor noted, less is more. I do think that there's the current 10,000 square foot would, would allow events whereas this doesn't. I guess I've looked at this pretty carefully and spent some time reading all the materials and I, I think it's a a step in the right direction in terms of promoting or hoping to promote and hoping to engender some more interest in developing that area. I'm less concerned about setting a precedent than maybe some others. Because I think we'll have the opportunity to discuss each of these as they come to us, if they do, for that matter. But I do think to address the current issue about Airbnb, I would like to add that as part of the amendment. I take it the food truck issue is something to be dealt with at some later time. Is that right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, your staff would recommend that. There's already fairly significant limitations on what a boutique winery can even ask for. But you could place additional restrictions at the time you had an actual application as well.
Just some other things that they brought up with me when I met with them that they were concerned about separate, a bunch of separate buildings. There's nothing that prohibits the residents from having a separate garage as long as the total square footage didn't exceed 9,000 square feet. Is that, that's true, right?
Yeah, so the residents would be allowed accessory structures as other residences throughout the city are. And they'd have to follow all of those standards.
But the total between whatever floor space is taken up by buildings can't exceed 9,000, right?
So the, there's a little bit of nuance here. So the, the 9,000 square foot figure would be the maximum footprint of the boutique winery, which is 5,000 square feet. Plus the maximum footprint of the single family residence, which would be 4,000 square feet. However, if someone wanted to have a detached garage, they, at the residence, hypothetically, they, they could. And the maximum size for any individual accessory structure is 640 square feet. So there would be some ability for the residents to get some additional, additional space if it were an accessory structure. If the garage were attached to the single family residence, it would be counted as part of the residence and thus counted towards that 4,000 square foot maximum footprint for the residents.
Yeah, so does that mean 9,000 was, was that yes to my question?
Sorry. So the, I guess the short answer would be the residents would be able to have a little bit over 9,000 square feet if, if there was a development proposal for a detached garage.
But that include the winery?
Yeah, the winery, yes.
Yes, that is.
I thought in the report it said the total of 9,000 square feet.
Yes, so the, I think the discrepancy here is with 9,000 square feet would be for the single family residence and the boutique winery. But that doesn't account for, you know, accessory structures, which are sort of these independent structures that can be separate from the single family residence that other residences, you know, throughout the city are, are allowed. You know, if you wanted to do a detached garage, that's where you would get that additional, additional space kind of beyond that, that 9,000 square foot total footprint.
Well, so that it can grow well beyond 9,000 square feet.
Yeah, so the overall, the overall footprint total. So there's another, there's another provision within the accessory structure standards that do allow for a, a maximum of 1,000 square feet of accessory structure space. So that would be 1,000 square feet of a detached garage or sheds or anything else that you might see in a normal residential tract. Just like the, the homes to the, to the east would be allowed. This residence would be allowed, allowed those as well.
So up to what, 10,000 then?
At a, at a maximum development scenario, yes, you'd have the 5,000 boutique winery. You'd have the 4,000 single family residence and then up to kind of 1,000 of the, of the accessory structures. So yes, 10,000 would be the absolute max in any scenario.
So we're back to a small winery.
Yeah, the, the overall aggregate size would be the, the, the same as to what the maximum small winery footprint is allowed. It just would be, you know, different massing. Generally, accessory structures are smaller and shorter. They have their own standards, you know, they can only be 15 feet in height. And there's a whole host of other, other requirements that accessory structures do have to abide by.
And so Councilmember Carling, while these regulations do mirror the neighborhood that this is located in, these same rules apply to the accessory buildings in those neighborhoods. If you wish the cap to essentially limit the total amount of building square footage for residential, that could be done at this time as well. The reason the, the regulations were designed this way was to keep both the size of the building and the ability to put the accessory structures very similar to the neighborhood immediately to the east.
Well, I, yeah, I guess that would be my preference to limit it to 9,000 square feet total. So again, you know, support Vice Mayor's point about less is more. I mean, if we I just I don't think it would fit with the character to have the residence, the winery, and then a bunch of outbuildings. That just doesn't seem that just doesn't seem right to me. I mean, I would, you know, I think, I mean, I would support a cap of 9,000 square feet total. I don't know what the, my colleagues thinks, but anyway, that's where I am on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe, followed by Vice Mayor Warner.
All right, so following up on Councilmember Carling's comments. I'm, I keep coming back to the what staying within the character of the, the current neighborhood. So with that, I will say probably not draw so that Airbnb or similar housing is not allowed if that's not allowed within the, the neighborhood. And vice versa, if that were to be allowed, then allow it. With regard to the total amount of space, my understanding is that, I mean, again, if those extra amount of space, which would be at ADUs or detached garages or whatever are allowed in the surrounding neighborhood, I see no reason not to have them allowed there. I mean, again, if, if the, if this has been designed such that it fits with the neighborhood, then let it fit with the neighborhood. And, you know, both plus and minus. And, you know, so with that, I mean, I would support no Airbnb, no food trucks. But yes, in terms of the extra buildings, because that is what the surrounding neighborhood allows. If I'm correct in understanding that.
Yes, that is, that is correct. Accessory structures would be allowed in the subdivision to the east as well. In many cases, up to that 1,000 square foot limit as well. You mentioned ADUs though, and in this case, this site is still a commercial parcel. And, and therefore, an accessory dwelling, and it would, would not be permitted on this particular parcel, as would be permitted in other residential parcels to the, to the.
Okay, I withdraw that.
Let me, let me just make, just, I have a couple of questions. I'm gonna jump in here real quick and then I'll head over to Vice Mayor Warner. So it looks like, so that we're talking about a 1.8 acre parcel here on the site, correct? Yeah, 1.8 acres, plus or minus. And it looks like the parcels around there are somewhere between a third and a half of an acre.
Yes.
Okay, so let's say a half an acre. So if each one of those is allowed to build a 4,000 square foot house and 1,000 square feet of outstructures, that means that in a one acre parcel, you could have a 10,000 square foot aggregate set of buildings, correct?
That is correct.
And we're talking about mirroring what's allowed in the neighborhood. And, and this is, this, the boutique winery. So there, these, if you figure a half an acre each, they're allowed 10,000 square feet of structures on one acre. And we're seeking to limit to 9,000 acre feet, 1.8 acres. So if we're looking to be consistent, then let's be consistent. But it looks like we're working at two different sets of rules here. Secondly, everybody keeps talking about the C C Rs. It, it doesn't, wasn't it not that long ago that we got a complaint? I think it was last summer. We got a complaint about a, a series of A B and B parties at, at this particular home. And I believe it was in this neighborhood. Does anybody else recall that?
It wasn't this neighborhood.
I thought it was this neighborhood.
I don't think so.
No, it was farther down the street, farther, farther to the north, just a touch, just a couple of blocks.
But, but it's in that, it's in that ballpark. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so it's in that general vicinity.
The one I'm familiar with is actually near where I live.
Oh, no, this was the one, this was a
It's near where Trish lives.
Pardon me?
One that we've dealt with before, when this is near where Trish lives.
Yeah, there was another one that was in a fairly large substantial house and the guy would, would move out for the weekends that he had the parties there. He actually spoke to the council.
Right.
But I'll, I'll work on that one later. We heard a fair amount of comments about setting a precedent that this would open the door to more loopholes, that, that all the other parcels would be allowed to, to do the same thing. Does, is, if, if anything we do tonight, is that precedent setting?
So that it wouldn't necessarily be precedent setting. You know, staff has been processing modifications to these commercial sites. You know, staff has been processing modifications to these commercial sites, you know, sort of on a case by case basis. And each of the commercial sites is unique in the uses that are allowed, in the shape and size of the parcel as well. And so, you know, an example is, you know, commercial site four A one was allowed, and that's just to the north of this parcel. That was allowed a, a tasting room, and that didn't necessarily mean that tasting rooms were automatic for all the commercial sites.
So we're not setting a precedent. And we've heard a number of comments about concerns about impacts, but from what I've heard from staff and the comments is that because it's a boutique winery and not a small winery, events would not be allowed. So there would be less activity. And to Councilmember Carling's point, in this case, yeah, less is more, because there, there are fewer impacts. Because I have my questions answered. Vice Mayor Warner, your hand was up.
Right, thank you. I, I would just like to hear from Mr. Ford, the applicant, as his impressions of the conversation he's just heard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I mean, the, the long and short of it is, when we're talking about less is more, by definition, the boutique winery is less is more, sort of full stop. At the end of the day, this application seeks to spur development to support the South Livermore Valley specific plan through a method and means that is less impactful than a upwards of a ten thousand case winery. As it relates to food trucks and Airbnb's first food trucks, I just don't know if that's an appropriate topic at this stage. I think City Manager Roberts indicated that at the time of a application for a specific winery or a specific small winery or a winery, boutique winery in a residence, you can fashion conditions of approval at that time for when you actually have something drawn on a map on how it would be laid out. Regarding the Airbnb thing, I think this, this particular site, in my opinion, should not be the guinea pig, if you will, of the cities concerned about Airbnbs. See, I'm not, I don't know if, I, I don't know, and I don't know if anybody else knows the specific nature of the CCNRs as it relates to the surrounding community, surrounding residences. You know, I, I'm taking it on face value frankly, that that is the case, but we don't know that for sure. You know, if there, if the city desired to have some limitation on Airbnbs, I think it ought to apply generally as opposed to specifically to this site. Though that would be my main response to those various issues that were brought up.
Bob, you're still on mute. You were still on mute.
Sorry. Do you care whether it's nine thousand or ten thousand square feet as Councilmember Carling brought up?
As it relates to the boutique winery, we have worked extensively with staff and are totally accepting of the limitation on the square footage. Not only is it a maximum, and it doesn't necessarily, it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be four thousand square feet of a residence. It could be up to that point, and we were okay with that. But more importantly, or in addition to that, is it's a limitation specifically in the development code that it has to be a single story to minimize the impacts to the neighbors to the east instead of, and most of those houses are all two-story houses, and this would be limited to a single-story house to attempt to not impact view sheds from those houses to the east looking to the west. So the short answer is, we have no problem with the nine thousand square foot limitation with the boutique winery designation. But we, just remember too, as with the small winery designation, you could build up to ten thousand square feet of commercial, you know, almost effectively light industrial type uses for a winery that have loading docks, tanks, that kind of stuff. And a ten thousand case winery, I mean, it's quite large compared to the others. I would be, you know, only behind Wentie and, and the wine group and on many levels in the valley. And that just is a pretty big facility for that small of a site in that neighborhood.
So I, you know, I appreciate that. And my question though, I just want to be very clear with respect to Councilmember Carling's request. Are you okay with nine thousand or you need ten thousand total?
Well, I think that question relates to the accessory structures for detached garages. And I would like to be, I'd like this property to be treated equally to others in the neighborhood, that if you can have a detached garage up to six hundred and forty square feet, that that be, you know, provide the flexibility. Again, doesn't mean it's gonna be another structure. Somebody could prefer to have an attached garage. But I would prefer to have it as, as drafted in the, in the proposal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I think Mr. Ford brought up an important point here is that even if we amend, if, if we approve the amendment stated this evening, somebody could still build a ten thousand square foot small winery, right?
Sure. Yes, yes.
That hasn't changed anything.
And it could have events.
This just gives another possibility. I guess when I was talking about the nine or ten thousand, I thought until Jake mentioned after I finished speaking that an ADU is not allowed. Is that, is that what I heard, Jake?
On this parcel, that is correct.
Okay, I was worried about that as much as anything. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, I guess I'm not hard over limiting it to nine thousand. That's just what I thought I read in the staff report, and that's what I was kind of stuck on. I still think that we ought to treat the Airbnb thing. And maybe to Mr. Ford's point, maybe that's something that we can deal with once we deal with AB, Airbnb's citywide, which we haven't done just yet. So that's where I am.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I'm, I'm feeling like this is a project that's been pretty carefully vetted, that my questions have been answered, and I would move to go with staff's recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Monroe. Is there a second?
I'm sure it'll come from one of the bobs. I'll, I'll do it.
You know?
Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, City Clerk, a roll call please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
No.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshon.
Aye. So it seems to pass four to one with Councilmember Coomer opposed. Okay. Thank you for all your comments tonight. And moving on to five point oh two, this is the Chick-fil-A on North Livermore.
Honorable Mayor, your City Manager Mark Roberts. I'm here to introduce Senior Planner Andy Ross, who will be giving the presentation this evening on Chick-fil-A.
Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Andy, at least I'm not hearing you. I don't know about the others.
I'm not either. I was hoping it wasn't me.
So maybe you could check your audio and restart?
Can everyone now?
Try again, you're very staticky.
Can everyone hear me now?
There we go. Sounds good.
Okay. So backing up, I was saying to orient ourselves, here is the project site. Here's North Livermore Avenue, I five eighty and Los Pacitas Court. The project site is outlined in this red line. And the proposed restaurant site is this one and a half acre orangish parcel shown here. So again, the project site, just from a different scale, shown here, the twenty-three acres, this pink line represents the city boundaries. And so the site is beyond those city boundaries, but within the sphere of influence and urban growth boundary. And so the proposal includes annexing the full twenty-three acres into the city in order to create this lot and facilitate development. Currently, the project site is designated as open space in the general plan. The project proposes to amend the general plan designation from approximately one and a half acre portion of the site to business commercial park, which is similar to the designations to the south and allows for regional serving, retail and highway oriented retail. Currently, the site does not have a city zoning designation, and the project proposes to designate or zone, excuse me, twenty-one acres of the project site as open space and the one and a half acre restaurant portion of the project as highway service commercial, which is the same as the properties to the south. And this zone authorizes drive-throughs through a conditional use permit. As part of the development of the restaurant portion of the site, there are some public improvements. If we look at the image on the left, this is North Livermore Avenue, the Royal Plaza driveway into an existing intersection, and the Chick-fil-A proposed project site is here on the left. It's currently shown as vacant. This existing median would be modified, as shown on the image on the right, to include a left turn pocket to provide access to northbound traffic into the site. In creating this left turn pocket, some of the existing trees would need to be removed. And as a condition of approval, these trees will be replaced consistent with the Livermore Municipal Code Tree Preservation Ordinance. In addition to the intersection improvements, the project proposes trail improvements. So again, this is the overall twenty-three acre project site. This is Los Pacitas Court down here. There's an existing trail, the Royal Los Pacitas Trail T six exists and terminates about here behind this postal facility. The project would construct the trail from this terminus through the project site to the intersection at North Livermore. So as we move to the site plan, we can see this trail in a little bit more detail along the southern boundary and its connection to the intersection. Overall, the site plan, the building is located towards this and oriented towards Livermore Avenue on the south side of the Royal Los Pacitas. These little dots represent a pier wall to secure the bank, which we'll get to in a minute. Overall, the site plan has forty-two parking stalls and a queuing capacity for the drive-through of twenty-six vehicles. Here's the site plan again, but shown on an axis. This is the landscape plan, includes varieties of trees and shrubs. The project is required to provide twenty-two trees based on the one and a half acre lot size. The project proposes twenty-six trees, all planted at twenty-four inch box size. So as mentioned earlier, the, the project includes a pier wall. A Royal Los Pacitas shown here on the north of the restaurant site and a pier wall built along the bank. This cross section is blown up here, and the pier wall is a forty-five or sixty boars bored into the ground, backfilled with concrete spaced about six feet apart. What that does is fortifies the building and drive-through in the event that the bank were to erode, would not be able to road past this point. Zone seven has evaluated this design concept as part of our normal referral process to partner agencies, and they deemed it adequate. The building proposes four-sided architecture intended to replicate some of the design features seen in South Livermore, including the use of stone, metal and stucco and articulation. This would be the elevation seen from I five eighty or on Livermore Avenue driving south into downtown. This would be the elevation that faces Livermore Avenue, again, use of stone and metal. South elevation looking north, this would be the vantage from the proposed trail or near the intersection. And finally, the west elevation, which would be visible from the drive-through, the parking lot, but also potentially from I five eighty, just highlighting the use of stone, wood and, and other similar materials. Because of the project's proximity to I five eighty, it is subject to the scenic corridor. It's located in sub-area five, sub-part A of the scenic corridor, which talks mainly to these ridge lines here, near the cemetery and the residential uses behind, the intent of which is to limit and regulate the silhouetting effect of building near that ridge line. On the lower line areas where the proposal is, generally speaks to being designed in a manner and scale that's compatible with the existing commercial uses, which this rendering illustrates. So finally, as part of the project, it's proposing a development agreement. It would function as a pre-annexation agreement such that approvals would be secured until such time or take effect until at such time as the property is annexed into the city. Also requires an irrevocable offer of dedication for the twenty-one and a half acres of open space shown in green, because it's an irrevocable offer filed at the time of recording of the final map. The city could choose to accept it at any time. Typically, or generally right now, the city is exploring what to do with the property, possibly selling it. Or selling conservation values similar to what we've done in Springtown area or the Doolin Canyon area and working with our agency partners such as Zone Seven or other entities to take over management and ownership of it sometime in the future. In addition, the, the development agreement can secure a financial contribution to off-site trail improvements. So this is North Livermore Avenue where my cursor is. I five eighty here. Again, this pink line is the city limit line, and the green line represents a gap in the Los Pacitas Trail. Chick-fil-A is located here, west of Livermore Avenue. And again, it would construct the trail up into this intersection, leaving this remaining gap, about twenty-two hundred linear feet to the current terminus at the Walmart property. The city owns the right-of-way through here. And the project would contribute two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards this trail. City has just under four hundred thousand dollars set aside for this trail, which would bring the total to about half of what is needed, which, the cost of which is estimated at one point four million dollars. And so city staff would seek grants or other funding sources to make up that gap. And so the planning commission and your staff recommend that council takes the following actions and authorize, to authorize future development of a drive-through restaurant at this location, adopt the Chick-fil-A initial study and mitigated negative declaration. Adopt a resolution authorizing annexation into the city and a submission of a application to LAFCO as well as execution of a transfer of property tax with Alameda County. Adopt a resolution approving the entitlements, including the general plan amendment subdivision, conditional use permit and site plan design review. Introduce an ordinance that would pre-zone one and a half acres of the project site to highway commercial service and the remaining 21 and a half acres to open space. And finally, introduce an ordinance that would authorize execution of the development agreement. That concludes staff's presentation. Mike Khan with Meridian, the applicant team has a brief presentation as well, concluding his presentation. He and staff would be available for any questions you may have. So I will stop sharing my screen and allow Mike to share.
Thank you, Andy. My name is Mike Khan with Meridian. We're a local San Ramon-based developer with national presence in commercial real estate development. Do you have a short presentation on behalf of Meridian and Chick-fil-A? I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Also with me tonight, I have Keith Gilbert with Chick-fil-A and Ed Hale with 4G, who are also available to answer any operational questions on behalf of Chick-fil-A. Before we begin, I would like to just take a brief moment to thank staff, specifically Steve Riley and Andy Ross with planning and Pam Lung in engineering. Been working with us over the past several years to get the project where it is today. Really truly has been a team effort and a long road. Meridian put the properties in escrow in January of 2016. And the first pre-applications entitlements middle were made shortly after that. We've been working with staff for nearly four and a half years on this project with over 40 different site plan iterations and numerous impact studies to get this project to city council tonight. I'd also like to mention that we did receive unanimous approval at planning commission on August 4th. And some of the comments at the end were that this was the highest and best use. It was a win for Livermore. And the applicant has really gone above and beyond working with staff on this project. So I'd also like to thank the owners of the current land sites, the Jensen family and the Vargas families. They're both long-term landowners in the city of Livermore and upstanding members of the community. They've really had a lot of patience and understanding on this long journey. So we hope that city council members and the community agree that this project as proposed will be a great addition to the city of Livermore and provide much-needed sales tax revenue, job creation, collection of city fees, and extension of the Class One Community Hiking and Biking Trail, as Andy mentioned. We're also providing a significant off-site trail contribution and a donation of 21 acres of green space. Staff has done a great job at providing an overview of the site plan, design and the environmental impacts, but I would like to emphasize some of the unique benefits that this project would bring to the city of Livermore. This is a small restaurant, approximately 4,737 square feet. It's on a to-be-created 1.6 acre parcel, but we believe our contribution to the community is extraordinary. We've teamed with the property owners to donate 93% of our land to the city of Livermore. The 21 acres surrounding the Royal Los Pacitas will be preserved in perpetuity as green space or and/or potential wetlands mitigation parks and trails. In the past, developers have proposed to densify this area with housing units, which would have taken away the open space character at this gateway entry to Livermore. Our project will ensure that never happens. According to the city's consultant, the project creates no significant adverse environmental impacts, which is a rarity these days. This is not by accident. Meridian has been spent, has spent close to $500,000 or will be spending to put a below-grade concrete pier wall system next to our building along the arroyo instead of the less expensive techniques such as grading the arroyo, hydro seating, or adding netting, plantings or other riprap. Our, our design solution, although expensive, is elegant in the fact that it preserves the arroyo and the surrounding land in its current natural state. We're also, as mentioned, building out the multipurpose Class One trail. We'll be collecting, connecting it from this westerly terminus near the US post office on most Las Pacitas along the southern border of our project all the way to North Livermore Avenue. This will allow the city, Livermore, to create a continuous trail without resorting to a long and expensive eminent delay process. We estimate, estimate the total length of this trail to be over 500 linear feet and at a cost of over $200,000 to $250,000 to us. In addition to constructing this onsite and offsite trail, we are contributing an additional $225,000 to the City of Livermore's general fund to build out the remainder of the trail to the east. That's along Home Depot and Wal-Mart. We believe we're going above and beyond to help construct this trail. At a time when COVID-19 pandemic is destroying our retail environment, this project, we believe, offers real hope for the city of Livermore. The restaurant is projected to generate upwards of $13, $14 million a year in gross sales, making it instantly one of the most significant generators of sales tax revenue outside of the outlet malls. This will provide sales tax revenue year after year during Chick-fil-A's initial 20-year lease term. We're also converting 1.6 acres of land with almost no property tax basis into a significant property tax generator with millions of added value. Meridian, in addition, is also paying over $1 million in development fees to the city, which is over $200 a square foot for the small project. That money also goes in the general fund to support other developments and initiatives that the city may have. Chick-fil-A is a highly-desired corporate citizen. Since 1973, Chick-fil-A has awarded over $61 million in scholarships to over 47,000 of its employees. Chick-fil-A's foundations granting philosophy in 2020 is to create caring communities where every child, regardless of economic background, race, religion, or orientation, has the opportunity to become all they can be. Local Chick-fil-A operators sponsor a variety of civic projects and are active members of the community, often participating through volunteerism, food donations to local food banks, fundraising and other partnerships with nonprofits. Chick-fil-A was also named one of the 100 best places to work by Glassdoor in 2019. Chick-fil-A also typically employs about 80 to 100 area residents, offering competitive pay, flexible hours, opportunities for leadership growth, training and mentoring. Job creation is extremely important right now in this time of economic recession. And this project will create hundreds of new jobs, including architects, engineers, contractors, and employees who will frequent the local businesses both during construction and long after. As previously mentioned by Andy, Meridian has worked with staff to develop a site plan that is functional and well thought out. We will provide the 14-foot wide Class One trail along the entire southern end of our site and provide a public easement to the city for community use on our property. This site also includes ample onsite parking, a long drive-through lane to allow for ample queuing, stormwater treatment facilities, 26 new trees onsite, and drought-tolerant low-water-use landscaping. The building elevations have been significantly upgraded to the typical Chick-fil-A prototype. As proposed, the building truly resembles a gateway project for visitors and residents entering the city of Livermore off the I-580. Yet this architecture, we will, we will set the bar for development moving forward, looking forward in this corridor. The building itself consists of architectural features such as high tower elements, decorative canopy and awnings, decorative chalice stack stone, multi-color stucco, foam cornice at the parapet, and well-thought-out architecturally pleasing roofline. Project will meet 2019 codes for low energy and water usage and all energy-efficient equipment. Livermore, like many cities in East Bay, is facing somewhat of a financial crisis arising from the COVID-19 pandemic. The city manager's fiscal year 19 through 21 financial plan updates. The shelter-in-place order, along with the pandemic event in general, is suspected to have the most dramatic impact on sales tax revenue. Sales tax projections reduced by 11% or over 4.1 million for the current fiscal year and 18% or 6.8 million for the next fiscal year. Our project provides an instant stimulus for sales tax revenue that is more than double or even triple any of the quick-service restaurants currently in the city of Livermore. So diversifying the sales tax basis is very important to the city of Livermore. Currently, the city derives 20% of sales tax revenue from the Livermore Outlet Mall, which is a single entity with a very small footprint. As the city manager notes on the financial report, consumer taste change as well as direct competition from similar retail centers being planned within the region also threatens to impact the critical revenue source. So in conclusion, I would just like to say, this is the right project at the right time. We've received no special benefits from the city. In fact, we have given more than, more to the community than any developer of our size would. We have truly raised the bar and I am extremely proud of this project. We hope you will, you will see it favorably as well and vote for approval tonight. That concludes my presentation. And if there are any questions, as I stated earlier, there are members of Chick-fil-A available to ask, answer any operational questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the staff or for Mr. Khan? I've got a question. So we got a letter from Sue Coleman stating that the state took a large part of the, the property to put in a new road. My question, was that North Livermore? Anybody recall? Was that road North Livermore?
Yes, as I understand it, Mayor.
Okay. I was just curious why it was the state and not the city. But a question for staff at this point. What is the city's liability or Zone Seven's liability should that pier wall fail? I mean, after all, we're allowing this project. If we do vote on it, what, what is our liability? Or do we have any?
So the pier wall would be on the Chick-fil-A property. So it would be under Meridian or Chick-fil-A's ownership. There's conditions there that talk about additional work, including lagging to secure it if needed. Pam Lung, our, one of our engineers, could speak a little bit more to liability and future maintenance needs.
I just want to make sure it doesn't come back after us that somebody says, well, you approved this and it didn't work. So we're going to come after you to, to, to make us whole.
Yeah. So it'd be on this project site and would be under their ownership.
Okay. So if we don't own it, it's not our fault.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Call as well. You do have certain immunities that do attach through your entitlement process as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Another question that came up in another one of the letters was a request to limit the dedication period to 10 years before the city decides or beyond that, the city would decide what they wanted to do with the property. Could you comment on that, please?
Sure. So the property owner wishes to put a time limit on the city's ability to accept the offer. And through our negotiations with the applicant and what we know about the property and the time it takes to improve it and find resources to do so, 10 years, we just didn't think it was necessary to limit ourselves. So our recommendation was irrevocable offer such that the city could take it when it saw fit.
Okay. Because recognizing that there's a prime flood control area, but it's also wildlife habitat. So there's certainly value in that property with respect to burrowing owls, red lake frogs, tiger salamanders, those sorts of things. So I see the, the pluses and minuses in both directions.
Correct. We from the staff's perspective, because as you're aware, Mayor, we have explored similar proposals in the not-too-distant paths for conservation sales, conservation value sales. We don't think it should take 10 years, but we don't want to overcommit either.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for addressing that.
May I ask a question on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We just want to say that from the applicant's point of view, we do understand the city's position on that. But however, we do, we do feel on behalf of Bruce Jensen, the landowner who wrote that letter, that in perpetuity forever is a very long time. We feel that it is a reasonable ask of the landowner to put a time limit on it. The city should be able to figure out within a 10-year period, as Andy just stated, what, whether they would like to take ownership of that land or not. And we urge council to put some reasonable time limit on it.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions for staff or for Meridian? Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. City Clerk's Office, is there any public comment?
City Clerk's Office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This first comment is from Mala, M-A-I-L-A. "We cannot allow a company like Chick-fil-A to operate in our city. Chick-fil-A decided to stop donating to anti-LGBTQIA-plus organizations only last year and diverted funds to promoting youth education, combating youth homelessness and fighting hunger. While it's good the organizations they have decided to donate are worthy causes, this doesn't show that they have had a change of heart or that they are listening to and working the LGBTQIA-plus community. This only shows they've had enough bad press to stop donating to these despicable organizations that are spewing hate and oppression to a group that doesn't actually change their lives day-to-day or harm them in any way. Plus, they never explicitly said it would permanently stop donating to anti-gay groups or organizations that discriminate against LGBTQIA-plus people. It just said it was changing its philanthropic giving model. As a community, we have shown so much support to the LGBTQIA-plus community, especially with the most recent incident with Dan's Good Cookies. Why are we now choosing to go back and support a company that does not support what Livermore and its citizens stand for? This company is morally flawed and doesn't deserve to be part of our amazing and loving community. This is a community of inclusion and allowing an organization that doesn't see all as equal shouldn't have any presence here. Furthermore, not only are you taking business from the other restaurant food chains in the area, but also the local restaurants who have struggled so much during this pandemic aren't, and are nowhere near recovering from the hit on revenue. So many small businesses are struggling and going into severe amount of debt. And now the idea of adding more competition to the, in the areas plain wrong and unconscionable." And then we have a comment from Jackie Cotta. "We welcome Chick-fil-A project into Livermore. It planned for improvement in Livermore plush jobs they will provide will be a welcome, refreshing improvement to our city." And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Did you think of the YouTube format?
No comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Comments from the council. Looking for hands raised. Councilmember Monroe.
Hi. Yeah. So I have a few questions and comments. So I have to say I am not a huge Chick-fil-A fan, both because of the moral issues that Molly alluded to, but also I just generally don't do fast food. That said, the benefits to the community strike me as pretty substantial. And continuing, I'd like to pursue some of the questions. So number one, the business impact. I would be concerned about the, the business impact on existing businesses. I'm looking at where it's located and thinking, maybe that's not the case. It's right by the freeway. But if someone on staff could speak to that, that would be great. Anybody?
Councilmember, this is Paul Spence, your community development director. We do expect that with the location next to the freeway, that the majority of, of their business would be auto-oriented traffic from the freeway. They'll be very visible and we think that will be the bulk of traffic. We can't deny that there will be a certain number of folks in Livermore and, and surrounding cities that may also come to this restaurant when convenient. And so there will be a minor loss distributed across the community of as, as people pick one restaurant over another. But again, I think the majority will come from freeway-oriented traffic. And as the applicant stated, will have a positive contribution to our sales tax revenue.
Could you speak a little bit about the traffic flow as well? I got a question about that, that I wanted to make sure. I got a question about that, that I wanted to make sure was addressed. I have seen the lines at In-N-Out Burger. I have heard about the lines at other Chick-fil-A's. And you know, this is right in, in a traffic flow area, particularly at brush hour. Could you speak a little bit about how that was dealt with, or speak again about how it was dealt with?
We can. Andy, maybe you could put the queuing image back up on the screen?
Yeah.
So Chick-fil-A's, right now at least are very popular. They often have long lines. And so interestingly, this, the, the site's very long configuration gives us a very long queue. So you can see, Andy has control of the cursor there, but you can see there's a very long queuing area that runs along next to the creek that allows significant stacking. And then the parking lot itself, if, if that were full and you, it had additional demand, would, would stack back a similar distance before you had any impact on the street. So our traffic engineers have, have looked at this. They've done some modeling and they think that the queue shown is adequate and that the parking area itself provides ample additional space. The restaurant has also indicated that in the event that that queue area starts to fill up, that they will, they'll have people go outside and take orders, which speeds up the queue.
Okay, I can just feel the arteries heartening, just as, as we speak. I'm concerned, so the issue that Malia raised about the reputation and actions that Chick-fil-A has taken in the past does concern me. It's, and so I would like someone from Chick-fil-A to speak to that. But there's also, I, I'm thinking about this in another way, which is that Vice Mayor Warner and I are a part of the Equity Inclusion with a, with a subcommittee. And we'll be speaking to that, to the working group that will be, you know, later on this evening. Part of that is part of what that working group and subcommittee will be looking at is work environment, cultural look and feel of the city and so on. And I'm wondering, as we talk through those issues, how Chick-fil-A would be part of that? So for example, I could imagine, I'm making this up, just giving you an example, a mural painted around diversity on one of the walls, one of the outside walls. I can imagine working with diverse representation within hiring practices and so on. Wondering, given what Livermore is going through, how would Chick-fil-A be a good partner in that?
This is Keith Gilbert with Chick-fil-A. Thank you for having us. This has definitely been a long journey just to get to this point. And I appreciate just the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I apologize if I don't have all the questions that you just asked, I might have to ask again. But in respect to discrimination, we, we have over 75,000 employees across the chain and we don't have any discrimination whatsoever. So as far as, as an organization and the, what you mentioned as far as discrimination to the LGBTQ community, we, our intent is to not support any groups with any political agenda. And that has been our, our intent. So we try to focus on youth and education. And so that, we, we tried to figure out ways to focus our giving on that group and in a better way.
So, so the other question I had was in terms of actively working within the community, particularly the equity and inclusion as, as we go forward. How could you see yourselves being part of that, you know, seeing as we pull different community businesses in, could Chick-fil-A be part of that and in what way?
Um, I think, I think overall, we want to focus on hospitality for Chick-fil-A. We don't want to get involved in any kind of political issue. For us, we're a restaurant company and we want to focus on that service and hospitality. And I think one of the things that the residents of Livermore will find out is just how welcoming a place it actually is. They may have heard stories all in the media, but to have that firsthand experience, there's a reason why people love us. And, and one of those main reasons, I think, is the hospitality and service to everyone that comes into our restaurant. And I think that's the best way that we can be an example to the community is to just continue to just show that hospitality and service.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm a little not particularly satisfied with that answer, to be honest. I, I recognize that what has been done here is a really heavy lift and I really appreciate the improvements to, to the Royal, the, and to the trails. And my guess, you know, for me, that outweighs what I consider to be a pretty weak response on your part, just because hospitality includes equity, inclusion and so on. And what I hear was somewhat of a division between those two, which does not make me happy. Again, I think that what you're giving the community outweighs that, but I really hope that you reconsider, you know, in terms of how, of, of your interaction with, with the community and with regard to the other, other area. And that's, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Warner, your hand is raised.
Yeah, a, a couple of things. One is with respect to the restaurants that would be impacted. I would think that the one in Pleasanton would be impacted. Isn't the reason for wanting this one here is to offload some of the pressure on that one? Is that, isn't that some of the thinking here?
I think that serving this community is important to us. And does it take pressure off of Pleasanton? I think it would have an impact for sure on Pleasanton. But also, we don't want the residents of Livermore having to drive to Pleasanton to get Chick-fil-A either. So but yes, the more stores that we do get in, in the region, I think it will take pressure off of all of our stores there, drive-throughs, just all of the impact that you see when you have a store by itself. I think it will take a lot of that impact off.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, is that when we think about the impact on the other businesses, we don't think just simply about Livermore because of the this particular product and the people that favor it. That's all I was trying to get at. It's not, it's not just a Livermore issue on the impact. And I think that's why we're thinking that this is an incremental add to the sales tax. That's all. So this is not necessarily for you, Keith, but Andy Ross and the others. Is, is that the thought process we have here?
There is a thought that, or we've heard that it would take some of the pressure, I guess, off Pleasanton in that Livermore residents to obtain this product do go to Pleasanton to get it now. But as Mr. Spence said, the analysis also shows that this picks up, you know, pass-by trips because of its freeway orientation.
Right, I'm just trying to say this isn't a zero-sum game within Livermore. And that we're, that's the basis for our assumption that it's a net add. Right, I'm just, it's sort of a yes or no, that I'm thinking about this correctly.
Uh, yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay, the, the other comment that I have here is that I'm, you know, we understand that the negotiations around the trail improvements have been considerable. And that it's my impression that this is a, a good deal, given everything. Is, could staff comment on that?
Yes, that's correct. Your staff believes that overall, within the capacity of the project to be able to move forward, that this brings substantial benefits to the community. And as the applicant noted, it is a relatively heavy lift for a project of this scale. So it is a good, as you said, a good deal.
And, and also I'd like to second what Mayor Marchand said. I very much appreciate the letter from Sue Coleman about the history. I thought that was very interesting and I, and it's, it does give a, a unique perspective to what's going on here. So if others haven't read it, I would suggest they do. And then I'd like to end on my questions. Sort of emphasizing or seconding what Councilmember Monroe said about equity inclusion. Certainly is something I'm very passionate about, as she is. My question is, to what extent can that enter into this decision?
So overall, the item before you is a legislative act. It includes annexation of a property which is not in the city of Livermore. It includes changing a general plan designation. It involves changing a zoning designation for the property. So the council has significant discretion on the application before it. And ultimately, whether a business is appropriate for the community, whether it's appropriately located, whether the area, the mitigations are appropriate, all are appropriate items for council consideration.
Okay, I just want to point out that what Councilmember Monroe alluded to is we think about equity and inclusion. There are multiple aspects of it. And one is the economic playing field. And to what extent are we encouraging businesses that encourage equity and inclusion? So I personally think I, I would urge Chick-fil-A, as Councilmember Monroe did, to think about stepping up here. So that, that ends my comments.
Councilmember Carling?
Thank you. I'm going to first say that I agree with my previous two council members. I think it is a good project. But Mr. Gilbert, your answers to the questions posed by Councilmember Monroe, I found to be pretty disappointing. And to claim that Chick-fil-A has no discrimination whatsoever, which is what you said, I just find can't be true. We all have discrimination and I suggest you read some of the books that are out these days about what is going on in this country regarding discrimination, equity, inclusion. Before you answer these kinds of questions again, I also thought your answer blaming the media was pretty weak. And so, you know, we often look at the media and blame them. But I think you need to look inward in some of the policies and practices that Chick-fil-A has had in the past. And think about how you want to participate in this community in a more general way and supporting both equity and inclusion, more specifically. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Coomer?
I, I'm thinking of those 80 jobs that we'll add. You know, kids that will need something to do after school or between school and you know, whatever they can do, a place to start for them. I'm thinking of hiking on a trail that, hey, at the end of the hike, I can go through the drive-through. What the heck? If I'm in a wheelchair, it's easy for me. But, you know, I, I've leaving all the the equity questions aside, I, I'm all on board for this project for so many reasons there. The improvements to the creek bed, the, the trail improvements and the, the certainly the food improvements along that trail.
Well, thank you. Yep, they called me in on this project probably four years ago, when staff first started talking with, with Chick-fil-A. And they wanted to know what things we would require for this to come into the, into the city. And staff was adamant that there were certain benefits that we needed, that the community needed. And to be honest, you know, people are saying, should, should we allow this in our community? Really, it's up to the community to decide whether or not they're going to support a business. I've heard a lot of things about Henry Ford that in retrospect are historically not, they're, they're offensive. I still drive Fords because it's something that, that works for my family. How many people here are members of the Sierra Club? And who founded the Sierra Club? And yet they, they disavow that. So what I see is that Chick-fil-A is listening to the community. They've, they've started to turn their actions around. And I think it's up to the community to decide whether or not they're going to support Chick-fil-A. I see that Chick-fil-A has worked very, very hard to come into my community, into our community. And I've seen, I've gotten a lot of emails supporting them because people want Chick-fil-A in this community. They don't want to have to drive into Pleasanton. So on balance, I see that they've made a real effort to come into the community. So I see, Councilmember Monroe, your hand is raised?
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't understand, I, I, why this is a question of either or. I think that Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Carling and I have all made clear that we understand how hard Chick-fil-A has worked to make this work for this community and that the benefits to the community outweigh the downsides. This is part of what politics is frankly, is whether people like it or not, which is you, you, you look at the benefits and you look at the downsides and you take the benefits when they outweigh the downsides and you work with the downsides. What I'm encouraging, and I believe that this is also true for Councilmember Carling and Vice Mayor Warner, is that as members of this community, Chick-fil-A step up. And, and that, that is the important thing. So I don't see this as being an either or by any means. I see this as, thank you very much. You've done a yeoman's job in making this work in terms of a, the, the work on the ground and giving back to this community in terms of land. Now let's do the work for the people as well as we go forward.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised. What is the pleasure of the council? Councilmember Monroe?
My hand wasn't actually up. I, I will vote for this, but I'm not going to make the motion.
Well, let me make the motion then.
Okay, a motion is made by Councilmember Coomer, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Discussion on the motion?
Did I say that? I didn't say that.
Oh, okay. You said that you support it, but you're not going to make the motion.
I'd vote for it.
Okay, so you're not going to, you're not going to make the motion, nor are you going to second the motion?
That is correct.
Okay, so in that case, I am going to say it is, the motion is made by Councilmember Coomer. Is there a second? Okay, I see a second from Vice Mayor Warner. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Coomer, second Vice Mayor Warner. Is there any discussion on the motion at this point? All right, with that, for the city clerk, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Coomer?
Bye.
Councilmember Carling? Vice Mayor Warner?
Vice Mayor Warner?
I said aye. Did you hear me?
Oh, thank you. Mayor Marchand?
Hi. I just want to recognize that the tremendous amount of work that everybody did trying to get here, I think that the net balance is that this is going to be a benefit to the community. And I certainly appreciate everybody that worked together to get here. Here hasn't stopped. There's still going to be more work needs to be done. But with that, welcome to Livermore. Okay. Let's see here, moving on. 6.01, this is an oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID-19 emergency. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Mark Roberts, your City Manager and your Emergency Services Director. Since the last time we met, it has been busy as the state, the county, and your local government have continued to respond to the declaration of emergency and the COVID-19 epidemic that has affected the entire world. On August 28th, Governor Gavin Newsom unveiled the blueprint for a safer economy, which consolidated and unified our approach in California. The plan imposes a risk-based criteria on tightening and loosening COVID-19 allowable activities and expands the length of time between changes to assess how any movement affects the trajectory of the disease. The blueprint created a new system for regulating movement and COVID-19 transmissions. It includes at least 21 days to expand activities beyond the initial tier to ensure California better limits the spread of virus, mandatory metrics, case rates, and test positivity to measure how widespread COVID-19 is in each county and guide what is allowed, a uniform state framework with four categories instead of 58 different sets of rules across the state, and more nuanced ways to allow activity. Instead of simply open or closed, sectors now can be partially opened and progressively add to their operations as disease transmission decreases. And finally, a new process for tightening up back quickly when conditions worsen. Based on recent data, each country will, each county will fall into one of four colored tiers, purple, red, orange, or yellow, which is the best of the colors there, based on how prevalent COVID-19 is in each county and the extent of the community's spread. As a state and county, we're now beginning to make some progress on COVID. Alameda County remains in the purple tier, so that's the most restrictive due to widespread COVID-19. We are currently at 7.8 new cases per day per 100,000 residents and our testing positivity rate is 5%. We can move into the red, which is the next lower tier, when we are consistently, that is for at least three weeks, have fewer than seven new cases per day per 100,000 residents and a test positivity rate below 8%. Schools may not open for in-person learning when a county is in the purple tier. In Livermore, our case rate per 100,000 continues to be higher than our tri-valley neighbors, although still a little bit below the county average. People between 18 and 50 continue to have the highest rates of infection and the Hispanic population within the county continually, continues to be particularly hard hit by COVID with an infection rate of over double the average within the county. Looking forward, Alameda County uses a number of prediction models and the Lima COVID-19 prediction model uses hospital data. And that data being used right now is through September 5th because there's a lag time. But it estimates that the median Alameda County transmission rate to be 0.69, down from 0.90 last week and down from a peak in June of 1.24. And you've guessed it, this means that each person with COVID-19 transmits the virus to 0.69 other people. And so if we keep the transmission rate below one for a long period of time, the virus and infections will continue to head in the proper direction. And we will continue to be able to move to less restrictive tiers. Good news is in Livermore that our rate of new cases has dropped from about 10 new cases a day in the July and early August timeframes to now between four and five new cases a day during the last few weeks. So all of the activities that we have taken collectively to limit our activities, to cover our faces, to make sure that we are being safe when we are having interactions with others is starting to pay off. If we keep this up, we will be able to ultimately move forward further. So that actually is the first time in now several months, in fact, since summer, that I've been able to give you any sort of a positive report on both our case rates here in Livermore and in the county. Following up on the direction that you gave us as your staff last council meeting, at your last city council meeting, you directed staff to create and implement a citywide small business assistance grant program. So beginning the day after your direction to us, we have created that program. We have developed the rules and regulations, the application process, all of the various steps necessary to verify the various components of that program. We've distributed that information out into the community. We have answered literally hundreds of questions from businesses within the community who wish to access that total $2 million that the county, that the council authorized. You recall that the maximum grant amount per application is $20,000 per business with a maximum citywide amount of $2 million. As of the end of business today, we have received 67 applications requesting $867,000 in reimbursable expenses. Approximately half of these expenses, as we complete our review, are ineligible because they are operating expenses, such as payroll, rent, and utilities and fall without, outside the bounds of the program. But that leaves still almost $400,000 in total, which appears to meet the criteria. And the first $155,000 worth of applications is in their final approval. And we expect to have those applications forwarded in approved form and essentially their payments being able to be sent out as soon as later this week. And so I just want to give a shout out to staff. Your direction, of course, three weeks ago was clear. But to create a program with all of the various necessary controls and requirements to distribute information about that, to have answered literally hundreds of questions from the community about it, to receive applications, to review those applications, to get additional information back in, to process those and to have them ready for payment in this period of time is unusually fast. Your direction to us was to do that, and so we have done that. I want to give a shout out to our folks in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, folks in finance and others who have helped move the process forward. And for those still seeking reimbursement, one of the best things you can do is to ensure that you have completed your application, including submitting evidence of all your expenditures, your proof of insurance, your business license number, and your automatic deposit information to, in order to expedite your review. So your staff is very pleased with that. It's a very popular program. We continue to get inquiries on that. But at this point, your funding that you have laid out, we still have funds available. So if anyone out there in the business community that has a full-time equivalence of more than two employees is interested in applying for that and is consistent with the rest of the rules of the program, certainly take a look at our website. The information is all there. You can reach out to our staff in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. And Bandawater is our director there. And follow up because the program still has information available. You, in a previous meeting, directed your staff to go and get additional training with the county of Alameda, enabled to being able to take a look at the data that they do have. And while they do have a number of different data points on their website, and we will be taking those and doing some analysis for you, we have just received additional information that they're going to make additional information available to our staff in the coming weeks. So while we should be able to get some preliminary information back to you, perhaps as early as your next council meeting on sort of why Livermore's numbers are different than the rest of the tri-valley. So one case, why are we more, for example, than Pleasanton or Dublin? Or correspondingly, why are we less than other significant areas in the county? And so some explanation of that, and are there things that we are either doing right and need to continue to do or things that we need to begin to do or do more of is what we'll be looking for in that data analysis. The data that we do have is not as fine-grained as we would like to be making policy off of, but we do hope to get some additional data and at least provide some basic understandings back on that information. Those are the three areas. I was issued the new state guidelines, your business assistant program, and the data analysis that I wanted to highlight in this item. I am available for questions if you have any further items under 6.01. You do have a number of items on your agenda this evening that are related to your local emergency. And of course, those will be coming up later on your agenda as items 6.03, continuing our local emergency, and 6.04, a resolution ratifying one of the earlier orders.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Do we have any questions or comments? But Vice Mayor Warner?
A couple of questions. I think it was Councilmember Carling that had requested you coordinate or try and get resources out of the labs. Any progress on that that you would report?
So we have reached out to the laboratories and one of the complications there is both of the laboratories have noted that their ability to do data analysis formally with us is limited based on their contracts that they have back with their parent agencies. But we have heard that we had several folks from Lawrence in particular that were interested in perhaps doing some volunteer work with us, with us and on some data analysis. And we continue to reach out and we are still hopeful to make those contacts work. But at this point, I don't have anything as far as us moving forward, except that we at least have the idea of the volunteer issue in process.
So along those lines, do we at least have the more detailed data that could be analyzed if there were people to help?
The county ultimately gave us information today that their timeframe is now down to about two weeks or so. That provides a little more data on that. The county, two weeks ago, started putting more information out on their website. And of course, we do have that and can get that by zip code and of course by city. But some additional data points for, per geography, in other words, by city, would be available as well, hopefully in the coming weeks. So by the next time we meet, I should have a little more information with that. Obviously, one of the things we're looking at in our preliminary analysis is the populations that are particularly hard hit by the virus and their demographic reasons that some of our numbers are the way they are. That'll be the place we start as we get additional information with more information, either geographically within the city or other data we'll be taking a look at from that angle as well.
So, but I did hear we have it by zip code and we have two zip codes. So those numbers you gave us on the transmission rate and case rate, could we, if you could repeat that, you said the transmission was less than 1.67.
Yeah, so that is a countywide transmission rate based on hospitalization data through September 5th. That is correct.
We use countywide. Do we get that?
We do not get transmission rate based on hospitalization because they do not track hospitalizations by city. At least they don't make that information available to us because I'm quickly scanning the information that they are going to give. I don't see essentially transmission rate as one of the items in the geography. We can certainly ask that question.
There was the question about, you know, there's, so those numbers you gave us for Alameda County, they weren't Livermore.
The number on the transmission rate was Alameda County. The case rate per 100,000, I gave both Alameda County numbers and essentially city of Livermore numbers.
Okay, could you repeat that? Because I kind of missed it. It was something I recall, something like 10, went to 10 to 5, but I couldn't.
Yeah, so that actually was a new cases per, new cases per day averaged over a week. And we were at 10 new cases a day essentially through June, July, and August. And we have dropped to now between four and five new cases a day.
Really?
We being the city of Livermore. And those are, that's absolute cases. We, in the city of Livermore, are total cases per 100,000 is 926.2. As a, that's data from last Friday, three days ago.
Right, okay, but the, the daily case rate that you gave us from 10 to 5 was Livermore, but the 0.67 was Alameda County.
Correct.
Do we get the equivalent of the 0.67 for Livermore at any time in the future?
And I will ask the county that. They have not noted that transmission rates, and it does obviously depend because there are a couple of different ways you can figure transmission rates. But we will ask the county, is there a way to figure transmission rate data by city?
And could we get these two numbers split by our, the two zip codes we have as a beginning? I mean, that just indicates to me that we're making some progress on some more refined understanding.
Yes, and we do have zip code data. So you certainly, total cases and new cases we can get by zip code.
Okay, and then, well, thank you for that. The other question I have is, we brought it up before about, well, we're helping the businesses. And could you remind us where we're going to be on the thought, on having some thoughts on, for the residents?
So the city participates with its nonprofit partners on a number of programs that deal with residences as well. So from that perspective, we contribute to nonprofit partners for the local food banks and those who hand out food. You'll remember that the city of Livermore and LARPD are helping one of our local nonprofits hand out food availability every day at the Robert Livermore Center. There's also an augmented program there for meals.
What I'm asking is, can the summary of that be posted?
Yes, we can certainly add that to the website.
That would be helpful. No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I'd like to point out, I had a meeting last week with Sandia National Laboratories. And while they are not working directly with the city, they have at Sandia over 50 COVID-related projects. And that's related to rapid diagnostics, modeling the disease and its transmission, treatment and vaccines using supercomputing, the also manufacturing, their additive manufacturing programs, a lot of work on decontamination and also COVID testing. Sandia was the first of the 17 national laboratories to start to test their workforce. And they literally can perform hundreds of COVID tests per day on the workforce. So the laboratories are really doing a tremendous amount of work on a national scale when it comes to COVID-19. Councilmember Monroe?
I had a, just a follow-up. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the availability of information. My recollection is last council meeting, Alameda County was going to make some data available. Sounds like that was delayed to this sort of holding pattern. Is that? I don't think you said that directly, and I guess I'm asking directly.
Yes, that's correct. We expected to have the additional data before now, and they have now informed us that we're a couple of weeks out.
Okay, all right. So my questions really aren't, are about smoke being in the air. And our previous emergency around the fires, which seem to be fine here, so I believe 98%, which means pretty much they're out. Could you speak to how we're managing the air quality issues for some of our most vulnerable? In as much as that falls under this category?
So as you're correct that the fire nearest the SCU complex is contained, which is different than being out, means the boundaries of the fire are mostly in place and that certain areas within that boundary may continue to burn for quite a long period of time, is one of, as you know, many fires across the state of California. Air quality over the last four days was unhealthy in the city of Livermore. and projected to be so at least the next day or two. So the city is working on two major prongs for that. One is messaging, you'll note if you've been noticing our social media feeds, that we have been essentially doing a lot of communication around air quality. And of course, limiting outdoor activity, limiting the intensity of living, the duration of outdoor activity, limiting outdoor activity if you essentially are older or have an underlying health condition. All of those are important pieces and we continue to convey that out and refer people to information sources on that. In addition, in days where there is heat and air quality concerns, we have had Robert Livermore Center open for the last four days for air quality reasons. Unfortunately, when the days are very cool, even when there's been very bad air quality, we have not gotten very many takers. We had two days of zero folks responding and one day of one person, which is noticeably different than when we get days with some heat where we have more folks than that. So we're revising the criteria because obviously we want to have a balance between making sure that there are facilities open and available and preserving limited resources. And so our current heat related standards mirror that of many other cities in the area, which is two days over 95 degrees back to back. When we have air quality mixed in, that essentially counts for one of those days. So if you have a 95 degree day and unhealthy air quality, we will also be opening a center. So we continue to monitor and adjust our activities related to air quality as well as push out the messaging. But those are our two major focuses at this point.
Okay, going forward, I'm wondering, and I'm just sort of looking long term. I'm thinking about the air quality inside people's homes. And I'm thinking about if we have multiple days, you know, we've had, what, this has been a month of spare the air. I'm wondering about considering N95 masks for the entire city or something. And I, you know, just some kind of, my, my goal is to enable people to maybe get outside rather, you know, particularly those who live in small spaces when the air quality is this bad. I'm not expecting that to be solved tomorrow or even this year, but I'm thinking that maybe we should be looking at it for the future. Does that make sense to anybody else? Do we nod there or just put it out there?
What we can do is your staff is bring a little information back on that. I know the school district does do that for the day when they ultimately have in-person instruction back. They do have some ability to provide some level of masking. Obviously, N95s are tough to come by because of our COVID related. So.
Well, and that's a solution. I mean, the goal is to enable people to have in, in times where the, where the weather does not actually allow it to enable people to have somewhat normal lives. So anyway, I'm sorry, continue. Yeah. And one of the question which is, do we know whether or not the drop in rate of, of cases might be, how much do we think that's related to the additional precautions that our residents have been taking?
Unfortunately, we have correlation. We don't have solid proof of cause and effect, and that's that pesky thing. It, it, it is so we, you know, because the rates are heading the right way. I'd love to take, have all of our residents take credit for the amazing work they're doing. If they were heading in the wrong way, maybe not so quickly. So unfortunately, we don't have the hard data other than, you know, we have observed independently that mask compliance is certainly in some of the gathering areas within the community is better than it was in earlier summer. And we're seeing our numbers head downward. We also know the county's doing a number of things, including working with very specific communities in outreach in multiple languages, trying to improve some of their focus on especially underserved groups and doing contact tracing with them because they still don't have as many contact tracers as they would like. So it's likely a combination of all of those various things. And, you know, a lot of individual behavior where people are being careful.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this point? Okay, I'm going to open the public comment period. City Clerk's office, do we have any public comment?
We have received public comment over Zoom, City Clerk's Office, please read the comments received.
The first comment is from Evan Branning. I want to thank the council for help that has been provided to businesses and residents. As the COVID crisis rages on, I was pleased to hear that council will be looking into additional programs to help struggling residents. I hope to get an update on what the city is planning. From Jackie Cotta. As per recent updates to the falsified death numbers listed by the CDC as actually only 6% being COVID nineteen specific deaths, the rest being normal comorbidity related similar to the numbers in Alameda County and the proven facts that the PCR testing of cases are riddled with false positive problems as well as the recent decision by federal court ruling for PA stay at home orders, business closures and gathering limits being deemed unconstitutional and violating our rights under the First and Fourteenth Amendments. What is the city council doing to move on righting these wrongs that businesses and community members still being out of normal business operating procedures and draconian political mandates, not based on science, the actual science? Again, cases do not equal COVID nineteen, no matter how many times the mayor tries to twist my words and wasted tax money on fear based Orwellian marketing dollars, repeating mask mandates. Adults don't need to be reminded their constitutional rights are being violated, especially having to pay for these unnecessary reminders. Why is our city council ignoring the science and choosing to sit back and allow bureaucrats to violate our constitutional rights? Has the city demanded an audit on the death certificates of Alameda County? Using similar logic based on the findings of the CDC would mean only as of today, 19 of the supposed COVID deaths in ACO would have been absolute COVID related and not related to other comorbidity since we already know a majority were over the age of 70, which is normal flu season anyway. Since you've fallen into the propaganda of cases, have you asked the question, how many of those cases were double counted? Since every time the same person gets tested, excuse me, since every time the same person gets tested, it is counted as a new case? Or what the margin of error is on false positive on the test they are using? Are these sick people getting tested or are these people with existing antibodies? Or are you just accepting the blanket statement of cases without asking detailed questions? What are you doing other than supporting the propaganda and just sitting back and waiting for an election to be over and someone to tell you what the next big brother will allow you to do? Because what it looks like to the community is that the city council is doing that. Nothing for the community or businesses but sitting back and pushing propaganda. And then we have a comment from Razzy Hasney. I apologize, it's R A Z I H A S N E, N I, excuse me. Would the city be able to make the Livermore specific data with regards to transmission of COVID nineteen? That is Livermore specifically posted on the Livermore website as well. You had mentioned that Livermore is adding an average of five cases day now down from 10. Would be great to have that on our website and make sure we disseminate that to our community in a comprehensive manner to increase consumer confidence and the ability of business to mitigate transmission. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Any comments on YouTube?
No comments have been received.
Okay, very good. In that case, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council.
I apologize, Mayor, there was one, I missed one.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is on Zoom, this is from Brittany Kick. Can we consider expanding the small, oh, I'm sorry, wrong item. This one wasn't labeled, this will come later.
Okay, very good. All right, so with that, public comment period is closed. Bring it back to the council, any further questions or comments? Okay, very good. In that case, moving on to six point O two. This is a verbal report from the City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and discussion and direction regarding the city's response to encampments.
I, I, oh, one comment on the previous item, the request to make this data that we just heard up on the website. If that's, no, that would be good.
Very good, most of it already is there, but we'll make sure that the rest of it is.
Thank you.
All right, item six point O two. I'll kick it off, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. Wanted to give you just a very brief update. Your staff has been very busy as your, as well as your subcommittee on this. We're gonna hear briefly from Captain Matt Sarsfield. He's going to talk a little bit about our, our most recent creek cleanup activities and our community development director, Paul Spence, who's going to talk about a variety of activities related to homelessness and activities that you have directed us to do and make, and what our progress is on that. And then finally set the stage for our upcoming community meetings from the subcommittee. And then at that point, I'll turn it over to the two subcommittee members to, to complete the briefing for the council and begin the discussion at that point. So with that, I'd like to have Captain Sarsfield give us a bit of an update on our creek cleanup activities.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, our homeless liaison officers have organized and conducted numerous creek cleanups throughout the last year. The first one was in March of 2019, where about 20 tons of trash was removed. And we were able to identify about 55 to 60 unsheltered individuals living, living in the Arroyo Las Pecitas Creek area. After removing that much debris, we decided that quarterly cleanups would be best to maintain the health of the creek area. That did result in additional tons of trash and debris being removed. Unfortunately, a lot of these operations were cut short due to the weather and COVID and earlier this year in March, along with some of our partners, we're having hard times securing contracts with other contractors that assisted with our cleanups. But after we worked with our agencies coordinated, improved our coordination with them, we had a very successful cleanup last week. We concentrate our efforts in the Arroyo Las Pecitas area between Portola and Los Colinas. We, the number of people living in that area dropped to about 25. And many of these individuals were placed in the operation safer ground. And right now, there's only about 10 people living in that creek area. Between the city crews, the Clean Harbor Zone Seven and Crime Scene Cleaners, about eight tons of trash was removed, along with two 40 yard dumpsters were also filled with debris. After we finish up with that cleaning, about 600 goats were placed in the Arroyo Las Pecitas Creek area near Kaiser. Zone Seven provided this through their goat contractors. And this morning, another 600 goats were placed in the Arroyo Las Pecitas Creek area north of Paseo Laguna Seca. This area is also going to be added to the future cleanups because it's closer to residential areas. To, to keep a supervision on all the goats, there is a full time goat herder in the area. And so far, we haven't received any issues with the goats or the surrounding areas. And after the goats clear out all the brush, Zone Seven will be contracting with an arborist to trim up the trees and throughout the entire creek area, which will greatly increase the visibility in the area. And will make the area look much nicer. This concludes my portion of the report and I'll turn it back over to you, sir.
Right, Paul, can you give us the next portion?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Marchand and Council. This is Paul Spence, your community development director. I thought it'd be helpful to provide some additional information on the work the city's doing with the county to provide temporary shelter for the homeless who are medically fragile and vulnerable to COVID nineteen. We've been working on a safer grounds project, which is a hotel program. And the, the county has helped to set this up. We now have a hotel here in Livermore with 112 rooms. The residence in one of our newer hotels. And through this program, folks are able to get a room and, and food. We have served a total of 34 families so far, which includes 46 total individuals and have 28 additional individuals that have been identified for the program, but are awaiting some medical verification. As Captain Sarsfield pointed out, a number of the people that had been living at the creek have now been housed in the hotel program. And we have a bode as the shelter manager who's working on case management and medical coordination. So, and in addition, they are, they're working to find permanent housing for folks that are able to move to that next step. And Tri Valley residents are prioritized through this program, but there are clients there from other parts of the county as well. And in addition, we're working on other solutions, longer term solutions. We've been working on a project with the help of Supervisor Scott Haggerty called Goodness Village at Crossman's Church. And this is a project that will feature a total of 31 tiny units, which are equipped with a bathroom, a shower and a small refrigerator. The project will include a community kitchen, indoor community and resource space and a garden. And in addition, this project will provide some wraparound services, mental health and substance abuse counseling, employee training and social enterprise opportunities. They will also have a management site on, a management company onsite to coordinate services 24/7. And we've received a first round of funding from Supervisor Haggerty of $1 million. And with that contribution, we expect the units to be able to be ordered soon and the project to be serving its, its first folks later this fall. And the supervisor has also committed an additional $2 million in funding that helps support the overall project. And I should note that the council's homeless subcommittee has also been working on these projects and related issues. And that coming up, we actually are planning for our next community meeting in the next month or so. And areas of focus at that meeting will be mental health and substance abuse services. And then we'll also be providing a fuller overview of the Goodness Village project. And so we're currently working on scheduling this meeting. And if you're interested, check back with the city's website. We'll have something on the homepage in the next week or so noting the meeting date. And with that, Mark, I'll turn it back to you.
And I'll go ahead and turn it over to the two council members. So starting, if we have a volunteer, Councilmember Carling, do you want to kick us off?
Yes, thanks. Let me get started. I appreciate the update from Matt Sarsfield, Sarsfield, sorry. I was out at the creek, I guess, when they started and spent several hours out there. And I also spent a fair amount of time with some residents that live on Paseo Laguna Seca, which I assume everybody knows where it is, but I'm going to tell you anyway. It's out at the end of Portola, near where Portola reaches 580. That's a community there of apartments and townhomes. And Paseo Laguna Seca runs back off of Portola. And then immediately behind the apartments is the additional creek area owned by Zone Seven. And there's been, I met with a number of folks that live in that area extremely concerned about the homeless population in that particular area. And there's been a lot of burned areas, a lot of trash, of course. Number of people telling me how concerned they are about even walking on the, on the path there, the pedestrian path that's just behind the apartments and adjacent to the creek area. And so my, what I'm going to talk about is some thoughts that I've had regarding how we move forward and how we keep everybody safe. I think we've been focused rightly so on homeless, but I don't want us to lose sight of the people that live near the homeless and how they're feeling. And not only about their own health, but also their safety in proximity to the folks that are living in the creek area. And I don't, I mean, based on what Matt said earlier, I guess I'm thinking that some of the ideas I might suggest tonight, looking for concurrence of my colleagues on city council, we could ask the staff to take some of our discussion under advisement and then come back to a later meeting as to how we might consider moving forward in some of these things. So the areas that I have outlined are trash, fires, drugs and bullying or intimidation. and bullying or intimidation. Some of these, we probably have more or less the ability to deal with than others. Trash, I think, has been been pretty good, but you know, as Matt pointed out, we had not collected trash on the creek area since, I think, one day in March, and then it was shut down because of COVID. So one of my, my thinking is if the people move back and admittedly, there may be fewer people moving back than previous times because of the availability of hotel space. But I'm not sure that we can just simply count on that number to stay low or even go lower. I think we have to think that it may go higher. So one of the things in terms of trash pickup would be to increase the occurrence of trash pickup to essentially discourage the homeless from returning. And I'm thinking specifically about behind Paseo Laguna Seca. And one reason is because the housing is so close to the creek there. And frankly, there is nobody that lives in the creek area down by Walmart, Kohl's, the car dealerships. And in Tracy, they've already talking to our esteemed city attorney, Tracy actually did this, and they increased the trash pickup in a particular area and it discouraged the homeless from returning to that area. Now admittedly, we have to recognize that they may go someplace else. But I think we ought to think about that and what it might cost us. And of course, we're talking about Zone 7 land. And it would have to be a partnership between the city and Zone 7. So that's an idea about trash pickup. There's been an enormous number of fires out there. I think when I was out there, Andy Greycar had mentioned there'd been 20, a couple of dozen fires, but since June 1st. I think there've been some since then. And if you go out behind Paseo Laguna Seca, it's just horribly burned. And so apparently these folks are, you know, either to keep warm or to cook food, creating campfires that get out of control. I think that some of the fires, at least from what I heard, some of the fires down toward the car dealerships, they were actually trying to burn some of their trash and the fire got out of hand. Pretty sure fires are illegal in, in Livermore. So I mean, one question we could, or one thing we could consider is whether or not we would ask law enforcement to, to be more vigilant in terms of, of monitoring fires out there in the creek area. Lastly, is drugs, or not lastly, but next it would be drugs. Again, talking to Andy Greycar, he had suggested that a fair, that the creek area had been of, had become an area where people were coming from either outside of Livermore or from different parts of Livermore or something to buy drugs. And so these people are, have learned, some people have learned that that's where you can get drugs out of the creek area. And certainly there's a fair amount of heroin out there because just walking around prior to the cleanup on that Monday a couple of weeks ago, there are needles everywhere. It was not hard to find needles on the ground, which is obviously a health issue and a danger for anybody out there. So the question is, or the suggestion I'm putting forth is, should we, again, this is should we, I'd like to know what our, my colleagues think. Should we ask the police to be again, more vigilant in terms of drug enforcement? Lastly, I don't know what to do about this one, but apparently, again, talking to the homeless liaison officers, there's a fair amount of bullying and intimidation amongst different groups that live out there. It could be between people that speak different languages, male, female, some that just are schizophrenic and need a lifeline. And you could see some evidence of bullying and intimidation when we were out there. Somebody had taken a woman's stuffed animals and lynched them in a tree to warn this particular person that she wasn't welcome, I guess. So I mean, there's really some concerns. Now admittedly, I appreciate Matt Sarsfield's point about the fewer people there now and certainly, and hope that we'll be able to house more people as we move forward. But I do think we have to be cognizant that there are some things that we can, can ask PD to do in terms of enforcing some of our own rules and ordinances. And thinking about how we make the folks in particular, living along Paseo Laguna Seca feel more safe. Because those are significant concerns of mine. So that's what I would like for us to discuss amongst ourselves so that at the end of the discussion, we could have city staff come back at some later date with some suggestions of how we might move forward. That's all my remarks. I will ask my colleague, Councilmember Monroe, if she would like to add anything at this point.
Yeah, so thank you for that. I really appreciate the list. I think it's a good list and I share your concern with making it with having council have a full discussion on it. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the context and the goals. I think you alluded to them. I wanted to press on them a little bit more. So as we think about this, we have, I think, two goals. One is that we want to ensure that these vulnerable populations are cared for in ways that, in whatever way is possible. So for example, if someone is never going to be capable of holding a job, then we need to figure out a way to have permanent housing for that person. Whereas somebody who is down on their luck and can be moved from step one to step two, we want to make sure it gets moved into independence in a job and a home and so on. So that's on the one hand, we want that to take place. On the other hand, we want to make sure that that takes place in a, in a context where residents are safe. And, and that's the other piece that you're speaking to Councilmember Carling is residents aren't feeling safe. So I just wanted to keep that goal in mind. I also want to push a little bit on, so, so I, I have one, a question about changes over the last six months in the population growing, shrinking, and so on, at the, at the creek. My understanding is that the culture there has changed and the numbers have changed. And I'm wondering if we could get just a very brief discussion of, of observations around how that's happened. And I have a couple of other comments to make.
Captain Sarsfield, is there anything from the homeless liaison officers that might inform the discussion?
Couple of the issues that we have challenges with is a lot of the inmates at Santa Rita, because zero bail were released. A lot of those, for some reason, came to our creek area initially, which I think caused the upswing. Other than that, the, the violations for narcotics and stuff like that is, is a ticket. The jail won't accept them because of zero bail and they, they are given bus tickets when they leave Santa Rita to wherever they want to go and they come right back by later in the day. So that's kind of what we're challenged with at the police department.
Okay, so we're facing a problem here that is where we might have had more ability to, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm thrilled with jail being the option. We don't have a lot of options for consequences, to use the word I used with my children, which makes it a bit more difficult to establish a healthy, healthier living conditions. So I just wanted to keep that in mind because I think that makes what we're looking to do much more challenging. The second piece is that, you know, we talk about the creek. We really are, I think the other goal we need to keep in mind is that ultimately we don't want anybody living by the creek. We want them in tiny homes, or we want them in vineyards, or we want them in some other form of housing for two reasons. One, it's better for them. And two, this is a water source. And this is not healthy for anyone in the community. And so I think long-term, we also need to think about how we make that happen, given that it's private land and it's Zone 7 land. Both in terms of, of housing and making that an area that is, is going to be healthier for everyone. And so I'd just like to add that to the list of things that we, that we discuss. And with that, that, that that's my addition to what you have to say, Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. Well, I guess John will turn it over to you and you can lead the discussion, I think.
Okay, so let me just, you said John, right? Couple of questions that I have. For Captain Sarsfield, you said that there were roughly 25 people out there and they removed eight tons of trash and two 40-yard dumpsters. Did I get that right?
That, that's correct. That was a combination of kind of adding what we did in December, between December and, and March. That's correct, is what the numbers were.
That's 600 pounds per person. Do we have trash receptacles out there? I thought that we had them so that people could, as, as they accumulated trash, they could throw them into a, into a receptacle or dumpster so that they don't, they don't have to live in squalor. They don't have to live amongst the trash.
That is, that is correct. My understanding, there's still out there. And so some of that debris may have been by citizens from other areas that were taking advantage of our dumpsters.
But, but there was still.
You'd be surprised how much trash there is out there. It's amazing.
But there was still eight tons that was removed from the creek area, from the residents, from the people that were living there.
It's unbelievable what they collect and bring out there. And they live amongst, some of the people live amongst the trash in the squalor. Others that are there don't, but but one big trash container from LSI is out there every week and it gets filled. And there's still tons of trash out there.
Well, I think to Captain Sarsfield's point, recognizing human nature, if people see a dumpster, folks may, I see people dump stuff along the, the roadways with a sign that says free, when it's just, it's just trash. But, so yeah, there's probably people taking advantage of that. But on the other hand, to your point, Councilmember Carling, that they just have it in the creek and it's just stuff that they're collecting. Yeah, I think the, the, doing more frequent cleanups would be a possibility. To Councilmember Monroe's point about some people that will just need permanent housing because they will never be able to support themselves. That's extremely problematic because when we are looking at one of the causes that we, we see for homelessness is either substance abuse or mental illness. And those are county responsibilities to provide mental health care. The city does not have the ability to to fund mental health care. That's really what falls upon the county. And the same thing with substance abuse. Those are critically important where we need to have a partnership with the county. And as suggested a couple of meetings ago, perhaps something where we partner with the other Tri-Valley cities to get a, a cahoots model where we get mental health workers out there to help people that are in crisis, that are in that are dealing with substance abuse. And as far as the revolving door to both your points, where they get a bus ticket back. I mean, they practically get back before our police officers do. That's something that I don't have an answer for, is how do you deal with when you arrest somebody for drugs? And they're just cited and then released and they're back here. I just, I throw it out there. What can we do to, to deal with something like that when we've got a change of culture out there because we've got people that are being released from Santa Rita Jail and ending up in our community because the county gives them a bus ticket here. We can't just give, we, we would not give a bus ticket to a person who is experiencing homelessness. But yet I'm seeing there are other people, other agencies that are doing just that. So how do we, how do we combat something like that? How do we, how do we respond so that we can look after the people that are in our community, both the people that are residing at the, along the creek in, in the apartments, Paseo Laguna Seca, and also looking after the people that are, that are homeless in the community.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
So with regard to the county, I would appreciate it if someone from staff would address, I mean, the, the county is ultimately funding the mental health, you know, in conjunction with the, with the three, the, the Tri-Valley cities. And if someone could maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm going to let you guys figure it out. To, yeah, speak to the way that funding is allocated, that, that would be great. Because no, it's not, it's not coming from the city. Or not primarily from the city. With the, you know, the challenge with the, with Santa Rita, this is COVID-related. This is, this is not business as normal, and we need to treat it as not business as normal. It's, it's, I, I'm truly dumbfounded by what we can do with it, but, but don't, so, yeah, it's, I'm concerned that this is, that this is not normal. This is, we are letting people go so they don't die. I don't like it. But I'm not sure what the options are.
I was also told there was an uptick from Santa Rita when they first released him, but that, again, I was told this by the HLOs that are out there about that, that the nine or the 10 that came from Santa Rita then left didn't stick around the creek. So there may have been an uptick initially, but I don't think that they're around anymore. And I want to clarify one thing, John, we do give bus tickets. I mean, we may not give them bus tickets to kick them out of town, but we do give bus tickets to the homeless.
Well, okay, so be careful here because I know that we give bus, you know, bus tickets, but in many of those cases, it's to get them to work or to get them to the Axis Healthcare Center.
I agree, but.
My point was, is they give them bus tickets out of town. I mean, there was one city that said that we don't have a homeless problem here. When we encounter a homeless person, we give them a bus ticket to Livermore. That was the way they dealt with homelessness. And that's not what we do here. That's so that we facilitate them to get on with critical aspects of their lives. But it's a different type of bus ticket that we give them.
Could we get a, could we get the question around mental health answered?
Good.
And then I, then Vice Mayor Werner has a comment.
So Paul, do you want to address the issue about where we are in process with working with the county on their mental health outreach program?
Sure. We, we're doing a number of things with the county and I'll, I'll be the first to admit it, it's not enough. And the county does not provide the level of service here in the Tri-Valley that they do in other parts of the county. They basically have looked at some of the larger cities and that have a, a larger homeless population and poured most of the resources into those areas. So we have been actively working, trying to educate the county and get them to understand that, that we have a problem out here as well that needs to be addressed. And we're working through a number of areas. The county has a new program, Community Assessment, Treatment, and Transportation. They, they help people with mental health crises and substance abuse.
That's only for North County and Hayward, right?
Right. And so we're looking to see if that can be expanded. They have 9.8 million of Measure A funding. It's available for that program. And so we're looking to talk with them to see what can be done to expand that program. It's available for that program and so we're looking to talk with them to see what can be done to expand that program. The county also provides some resources to access community health, which provides for referrals and crisis intervention. Some of the problem is though, that the resources again are all, none of them are here in the tri valley. It's hard for folks to get to appointments. It's hard for our homeless to, to follow up on appointments. And so we, this is actually one of the things we're looking at, talking about with the homeless subcommittee. We've, at our next subcommittee meeting, we've got the, the county that's going to come and speak with us here. And we're looking at having access community health come as well. Bay Area Community Health, formerly Tri City Health, come to talk about their medical van. So we're working across a number of areas and again, trying to educate the county and see what we can do to get some of those resources.
Yeah, because there are no mental health facilities here in the tri valley. And as far as services, we do not have the density of the services that say North County has. So not only do we not have the resources, the facilities aren't here either. So there needs to be a, a significant reinvestment in the services and the facilities here in the tri valley. Yes, there's counseling available at, at access health, but we don't have the mental health care facilities if someone is in crisis. Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I, I wanted to start by thanking Councilmember Carling for going out and pursuing this, both with the, in the encampments and with the residents that are concerned. And I would, I'd like to thank him in particular for coming up with thoughts with respect to particular things we can do. And I think what I heard was the request that staff come back along those dimensions with what we are going to do. Is, is that what I heard, Councilmember Carling?
Yes, exactly.
I'd like to, for us to do that, so I, I second that request. The other thing that I think is important to me, and it's a long time ago, when I, you know, first suggested that we get a survey going. I really believe that we need to have the data and we need to track it over time. And in particular, how many individuals we have in which categories? We've mentioned a few. We were just last talking about mentally ill. But how many do we have and how does it evolve over time? And as Councilmember Monroe pointed out, we do have a pandemic which is, you know, put a, a pulse into the system and we don't know what's going on. But we need to see if what we're doing actually works. So we, we've heard that the population in the creeks has diminished. We have a number of people in the hotel facility. Well, what's happening over time? So I agree that we should take action on those things that we can. And we don't focus on what we can't do, but we focus on what we can do. And then we can also focus on what we need to advocate for. So to wrap this up, I again, want to thank the subcommittee for the work. And I'm looking forward to the staff report on what we're going to do. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we, do a public comments.
We do. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This comment is from Jackie Cota. 6.02 homeless in creek moving forward. We need to get back to a law and order society, not coddle their drug habits. What are the demographics of the people down there? Do they work in Livermore and is that why they're living there? Or are they just criminals supporting a drug habit, doing some criminal activity to support their habit? If we have so-called liaisons, what is an example of what people are suggesting we replace police officers with? What are the numbers? Why haven't they been successful in moving these people out and keeping them out? If this is a model of community policing of a social problem, it doesn't seem to be effective. Endangering home, homeowners resident's safety is not acceptable. Sounds like we need to bring in the law enforcement professionals to take care of the situation. Maybe increase funding there. We need to not allow people to live out there. It is not a living space. I believe having a 24/7 LEO patrol to ensure that once the place is cleared out, we make sure people do not come back. Placing trash dumpsters and objects that encourage staying as a resident out there doesn't rectify the situation. Do these people have jobs? I believe the county gives bus tickets because we have services for homelesses, homeless, i.e. food services. What are the liaisons doing about getting mental services to the truly disabled? Is there a housing facility for the mentally disabled that has open space to house people? What is the requirement of those inmates pass the bus ticket? Why are prisoners being released from jail if they can just wear a mask since you guys think masks are keeping people safe? That's a ridiculous comment. If that's the case, then you have spoken to Ahearn about the policy. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Anything on YouTube?
No comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the, the council. Vice Mayor Warner, is your hand still up or is it? Okay. Doctor, Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. Thanks for the discussion. I, one of the things I've learned going out to the encampments as much as I have is every time I meet an individual, ask where are they from? And three quarters of the people are from Livermore. And they're down on their luck for lots of different reasons. But I just wanted to point that out that most of these people have grown up in Livermore and just have, things have not gone well for them and they don't have a home. And this is where they've chosen to live. So again, thanks for the comments from my colleagues and I appreciate the discussion.
Do we need to have a motion on this at all or are we just, or we're good where we are?
I think this is just information.
If indeed the council is fine with your staff bringing back information on related to trash, fires, drug bullying, and then data on numbers over time. And what issues are individuals facing out there? Those are the items I've heard. Is, is that the consensus of the council that you'd like us to, to the extent that we can, bring back some information and ideas on that?
Certainly appreciate it.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Very good. We will begin to work on that.
Just like to add, when did you think you would come back with your first report on it?
We can, I don't know, is the short answer on that. Obviously you heard a report this evening. Likely we are two meetings away from sort of another report on that. We'll also gather some additional information related to mental health and some of the other items as far as what issues people have and homeless counts. So I would expect to get your first report back to us essentially second meeting in October.
Thank you.
And just one more point to add to what Councilmember Carling said with the, again, directly to Ms. Cota's comments about the demographics and you, do they belong here? Three of the, the most recent people that have died on the streets of Livermore all had family here. They had family here and because of mental health issues, their families could not help those people. And so they died on the streets because there, there weren't the resources to help them. But those are people that grew up here. And it's, it underscores the enormity of the problem. It's, it's not simple. And we're still working to find solutions. But it's, when, when someone's own family cannot help them, it's, it just underscores how difficult this is and why so many people that are homeless are grappling with mental illness. The city of Livermore doesn't have the resources to, to, to deal with that. And that's why we have to partner with the county.
Honorable Mayor, one last item on this one is the pleasure of the council that the information come back in memo form? Or would you like to agendize a discussion?
I would like it agendized.
Me too.
Okay, well, we, we've heard from the subcommittee. And again, to the subcommittee, thank you for the tremendous work, both Councilmember Monroe and Councilmember Carling. Thank you so much for your community outreach and all the tremendous work that you're doing. This is, this is a big lift and I certainly appreciate it. With that, moving on to 6.03, this is a resolution of continued local emergency. Mr. Roberts.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, essentially following both the federal government and state government lead who have declared emergencies. We have a local emergency declared here to deal with the worldwide pandemic. And the deputy city manager Christine Martin is going to give us a quick update on our request here for a resolution of continued local emergency.
Thank you, city manager Roberts. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And Mr. Roberts put it, put it really well and succinctly. As you will recall, back on March 16th, city council did adopt a resolution that ratified the Director of Emergency Services proclamation of local emergency. And consistent with the California Government Code requirement that city councils review the need for continuing local emergencies at least once every 60 days, council has adopted resolutions of continued local emergency on June 8th and July 27th. As the state is continuing to implement its blueprint for a safer economy, as Mr. Roberts outlined in item 6.01 this evening, and as the county of Alameda Shelter in Place Order has been modified over the past few months to be consistent with the state's regulations and, and also been recently modified to be consistent with that new blueprint from the state. It is evident that the conditions remain in place and many industries are still prohibited from operating indoors such as restaurants, schools, gyms and fitness centers. And, and therefore the emergency conditions identified in the proclamation of local emergency do still exist. And for that reason, staff is recommending that the city council continue the proclamation, originally ratified on March 16th and continued on June 8th and July 27th again this evening. And that concludes staff's presentation and we are available for any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions for the staff? Okay, I see no hands raised. I'm open the public comment period. Do you have any public comment?
We have received public comment over Zoom. City Clerk's office, please read the comment received.
This comment is from Brittany Kik. This is, can we consider expanding the small business relief package to overall 2020 crisis relief? For example, if businesses needed to buy cleaning supplies for smoke, extra air filters, et cetera. This has been pretty bad and since we seem to have some funds left, it might be beneficial to business. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public comment period and just quote our city manager that there is no extra money. We haven't yet gotten any extra money yet. We've still, we're taking applications. So I think it's a little premature to, to change the, the mission just yet. There's still opportunities, I'm sure. But bring it back to the, the council. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the continuation of the local emergency?
So move.
Move by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I have just one piece of discussion.
Yes.
I, I just want to say how much I miss seeing everybody in person. And if we pass this, doesn't mean that eventually we're going to get back to see each other because boy, I sure miss everyone. That's it.
I will second that as well as a, as a friendly amendment, but yeah, it's that what you see behind me is as close as I've gotten to the, the council chambers. So we will get there eventually, but we will get through there, we'll get through this together by working together.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the ratification of the executive order preventing third-party food delivery services from charging more than 15%.
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager and director of emergency services. And tonight, Adam Vanderwater, your director of Office of Innovation and Economic Development, will give us a staff report related to the ratification of the emergency order on third-party food delivery services.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members. Adam Vanderwater, Director of Innovation Economic Development. As has been discussed many times previously this evening and may go without saying, the continued COVID public health emergency has caused sudden and severe impacts on our restaurants, many of whom have had to rely on delivery and reduced capacity outdoor dining to stay alive. These businesses have limited capacity to negotiate rates with third-party delivery applications which charge between 10 and 30% of the bill for those delivery services. And as a result, a number of jurisdictions in our region, from San Francisco to Oakland, Berkeley, Fremont, San Leandro and the county of Marin, among others, have enacted a cap on the percentage of that bill that can be applied during the period of the emergency. The order that your director of emergency services signed on August 12th, emergency order 20-7, terminates that cap on delivery services at 15% with the resumption of indoor dining. As we heard earlier this evening, we are progressing towards that phase, but are not yet in that period. But when we hit that trigger, would sunset this provision? We are working closely with our restaurants, with our chamber, with our Livermore Downtown Inc. And more broadly with the California Restaurant Association and others who are looking at this at a regional and state level. As you can imagine, there are many considerations here, some of which will be before the voters as part of Proposition 22 this November. So as the conditions change, we will return to you with further updates. But we have so far received positive encouragement from the restaurant community who is surviving on these food delivery charges. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have and forward to your discussion.
Okay, any questions from Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks. How is it enforced?
It's, it's enforced as a private party agreement, agreement and is backed as a, and Jason can support me here as a, an administrative citation if they can't get to that. But we have not gotten to such a situation yet since the August 12 signing of the, of the order.
So Councilmember Carling, this is Jason McCall, your city attorney. One of the primary ways of enforcing for this particular order is that it creates a private right of enforcement by the particular businesses. So if they are aggrieved, they can pursue it independently. Or they can then again, turn it over to the city and the city's enforcement resources can follow through as well. But the primary recourse was set up for the businesses to be able to address the situation themselves.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment has been received.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Closing the public comment period. I think this is something that's, it's important because there are folks out there that don't feel safe leaving their homes, but everybody's got to eat. And I think that this helps to protect the businesses and helps to protect the people that, that, that need these services. Vice Mayor Warner.
I'll, I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner makes the motion. Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, yeah, if I could. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, all these restaurants are feeling the pinch of COVID. Everybody is. And it's been obscene to watch some of these food delivery services make out at their standard rate. So I think they can kick in a little bit too, to help everybody else out.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Coomer. Okay, with that, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi.
Thank you. 6.05, this is a resolution amending a portion of Resolution 202132 regarding the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee Working Group.
Honorable Mayor Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager, will give the staff report on this item this evening.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. On June 22nd, council adopted a resolution committing to the action items identified in the mayor's pledge by the My Brothers Keeper Alliance. And at the same meeting, council established an ad hoc Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, consisting of Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Monroe. Over the following two meetings, on July 13th and 27th, the council adopted resolutions to ratify and confirm the establishment of the Subcommittee, approve the Subcommittee's framework, and an up to 18-member working group. After an initial application period, 48 applications were received. Due to the overwhelming interest, the Subcommittee recommends the City Council revise the working group membership to not limit the participation to any specific number. This will allow the working group to be an inclusive body that may evolve over time. And staff is available for any questions that you may have on this item.
Vice Mayor Warner? You're on mute. You're on mute.
The click didn't work. The, I just want to add to that, that Councilmember Monroe and I and the staff are really thrilled by the number of people that applied. This is a, you know, I think unprecedented in terms of the number of people that have tried, you know, wanted to engage with the city on trying to figure out how to move forward on a really substantive topic. And what we've discovered is that, you know, we start out with the thought of equity and inclusion, and we didn't want to start with excluding. So what we, but what did though require us to revise our thinking as to how we were going to go about this. So I just want to say that we have come up with six major category topics that that we, that need to be addressed, and I won't go into all of them, but, you know, one of which is policing and human services, and others, say, all the way to housing, workplace environment. Those are the topics we think encompass the scope of what we have to deal with. And so what we think we can do here is effectively work with that number of people and deploy them against these topics. And of course, what we want to do is, Councilmember Carling pointed out, we do want to come up with action items in the short term. So I would, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Monroe at this point. But I believe we have a method and process here for effectively utilizing all these people, and we would like your approval to allow us to do that.
Yeah, so just to follow on to that, it's really exciting to see all the, all the applications. I read through them very carefully. The, initially, of course, this came out of the policing and public safety issue. And as you remember, when we brought this to you, we said, look, you know, as we, as we talked to people, this was a much broader issue than that. Well, the six areas that Vice Mayor Warner I mentioned, those came out of that read of the, of the applications. These were the areas that people were interested in, working on where they saw gaps in what the city was doing. You heard me allude to some of those during the previous discussion with Chick-fil-A. Simply the way the city feels, how our workforce engages with people. So it's, it is, it truly is an exciting process. The reason that we think it's possible to manage that many people and more, because we're hoping to engage many people, is because of the, of the nature of how we're breaking this down, as Vice Mayor Warner said. The, each of the groups, the subgroups of these 48 people who have indicated interest in these different areas will be essentially, essentially envoys to the rest of the city to gather information, spread information, bring people together in, in different ways. So it's really exciting to see this take shape. Now, the one thing I will say is that people who felt excluded were the vast majority of those who, who applied. And I would really hope that we would have a broad spectrum of people who don't feel excluded, who simply want to understand more and also want to under, want to explain their point of view as well. So as we go forward, I'm hoping that more points of view are recommend, recognized, included as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Okay, a public comment. Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
I, I see Councilmember Carling has raised his hand.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Carling, I didn't see that.
It's okay. I, I was just impressed with the way you're dealing with the 48 applicants. I think that really sounds like a great idea to include everybody, as you pointed out, but have them focus on the areas that they, I guess, indicated where their interests lie. So I think that's, I think it's very, I think it's a terrific idea.
Well, you know, we, we said this is a working group, and we're going to work. And the, the first thing is, you know, we, we've, and I think the other point is that we are looking for input from the community as to how to go about this. And so the first thing was this overwhelming desire to participate. And so we're flexing around that and will evolve as we go. And we have our first onboarding orientation session tomorrow night.
Assuming you approve this.
Right. Otherwise, a lot of emails we have to deal with. But anyway, it's a, we're very hopeful that you'll approve this and we can go forward. And we have no illusions that this is going to be easy, but it is exciting.
Well, Councilmember Carling and I, you know, well, actually, we have all rotated through the, the advisory body interview process. And, you know, there are some times when we don't have enough people to fill the spaces that we have on the advisory bodies. So the fact that we've got 48 people that are interested out of originally 18, I think the fact that you are, you are being inclusive, I think that's, that's terrific. So very good.
We felt it might be a bad look to start the Equity and Inclusion Committee by excluding two-thirds of the people applying.
So this is good, as you said, this is going to be a lot of work. This is going to be, this is going to be a lot of, a lot of work to bring all these folks together.
But with that, I'll, I'll just move that you, that we allow us to include everyone.
Well, let's have a public comment period first, so, and then we can include more public.
Okay. Sorry.
With that, I'm going to open the public comment period. City Clerk's office.
We've received public comment over Zoom. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received.
The first comment is from Jackie Cotta. The fact that this city council is once again falling to the propaganda that there is some sort of systematic racism problem needing to be addressed by some committee and calling it by some name of equity inclusion is a ridiculous waste of time. In 2019, there were nine unarmed black men killed by police officers. One only was unsubstantiated for which the officer is being charged and punished. There were 19 white unarmed men killed, and they were also, they were all still violent encounters with law enforcement and ultimately substantiated and not charged. Why is our council continuously falling into propaganda-based focus groups before doing research on whether an actual problem exists? Fact, Black Lives Matters riots have destroyed more innocent black lives in the last month than white police officers have in a decade. Why again are we wasting valuable resources on a non-issue? We don't need to defund our police department. We don't need to move resources to social workers. Perfect example is the shooting that took place off Tesla Road last Sunday when a man shot his mother in a domestic incident. We needed and had trained law enforcement officers that thankfully took charge based on their professional training, and they were able to diffuse the situation that was on the verge of becoming a murder-suicide situation. But due to the awesome training our ASCO and LPD have and should increase the situation ended peaceably. This working group is a waste of our tax money. There's no systematic racism in law enforcement. Obama Foundation recommendations are political in nature and citing that as a resource is biased. And then we have a comment from Brittany Kik. Happy to see this is moving forward, looking forward to it. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Anything on YouTube?
Nothing has been received over YouTube.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Comments from the council.
I'll move staff recommendation. So Bob doesn't.
I'll second.
Okay, one point I'd like to make is that some folks are suggesting we may not be doing this fast enough because there were, we heard from members of our community that this was important to them. But we're not just checking boxes, and we've seen that in other jurisdictions, checking boxes doesn't work. What we're working to do is to create a culture, that culture of inclusion and equity here. So I think that's even more important because it's more long-lasting than just checking boxes. So with the motion and the second, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Warner, you had a comment?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that engaging with the community is one of the best uses of city resources.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, with that, any further comments on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. That, we are moving on to item seven. This is the, that is initiated and reported. Let's see, Councilmember Coomer, since you're on my far, you're my far left.
Yeah, there you go. What the heck? Had a Lavta Finance Administration meeting before I left for a 10-day trip to Oregon and Washington before all the fires started there. And on the way back today, we have a, had a Lavta board meeting. The highlight to me was the discussion of moving the fleet of Lavta vehicles to a zero emissions fleet by 2040, I think is the mandate. And they have it on the schedule that if, if the schedule worked out and all the funding worked out, it may be by, within half that time. And it was exciting to hear and go over all these things, and I'm looking forward to more. And that's, I have nothing to, nothing else to, to offer at this point.
Nothing to initiate. Okay.
To initiate. Thank you.
Well, welcome back from, from the wilds of the north.
Kids and kids, yeah.
Councilmember Monroe.
On September 2nd, there was an LCAC meeting. There, I've been working really hard on a website and, which should be, I think it's gone live by now. So the community can see what the overarching organization and all of its members' arts organizations are up to. So that's it, www.lcac.org. We can check it out. You can check out all, they got a great page, the front page, the introduction page is fantastic. They had the request to put the LCAC website link on the city page. I know we've talked about member organizations and that being not even possible, but this struck me as being somewhat different. So I'm wondering about, can we, is there an answer to that by any chance? Can we, that's something we can do, not do, whatever?
We generally don't have links to other organizations unless they are a criminal organization or they are essentially part of us as our advisory bodies.
Okay. I will pass the word. Tri Valley Nonprofit, TVNPA, Tri Valley Nonprofit Association had a panel on September 10th on racism with Carita Coleman, Jackie Opeland, James Head, and Harold Roundtree, discussing the issues of racism in general in nonprofits and in the business world, and how to think about this going forward as a, as a society. So as we move forward as a city, reaching out to other organizations, including TVNPA is something that we'll be doing. Let's see, those were, a lot of meetings on homelessness, a lot of meetings on equity and inclusion, a lot of staying inside. So I had two, I have a question. Let's see, census deadline is September 30th. If for some reason you haven't been counted, please do. Everybody needs to be counted. Without that, the number, the count matters for getting funding, the count matters for votes. It's not adults, it's everyone, not citizens, it's everyone. If you live in Livermore, get counted. And if you don't live in Livermore, and for some reason you're watching this, get counted in your city. Pass the word to your friends, relatives, everywhere in the, in the US, just September 30th. Register to vote. That, we have, I believe, an election coming up in not too long. I've seen questions around how Livermore is going to be doing voting, how California is going to be doing voting. And I'm wondering, Madam City Clerk, if you could speak to what's going on in Livermore for just a moment.
We still have limited details regarding our voting locations. The Red Star Voters will be providing a list of accessible vote locations in the near future. We do have several ballot boxes that are being lined up as well. And so voters will have the opportunity to participate either by mail or in person at the drop box or at the accessible vote locations.
Great, thank you. I wanted to make sure that was out where everyone could hear it, just so that the confusion was lessened.
And we have a drop box right in front of City Hall.
And there's that, but there's going to be more than that, I believe, as well. So yes, we have, Vote Box R Us. For I, I, in, I have a personal, on a personal note, this Friday evening begins the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. So I'm getting ready for that with honeycakes for a sweet whole year after this past year. You know, I just hope that, I have a wish for everyone, that we have a sweet year, that it be a good year, and for us all. The next city council meeting will be the evening of the day of Rosh Ha'Avah Yom Kippur, so I will not be attending. I wanted to say one more thing about that, which is that I typically participate in my community by chanting Torah. What I'm practicing right now speaks, it's a piece from Deuteronomy that speaks to how we have the choice to act for life. And as I'm preparing it, and as I'm living in this world that we're living in, it just strikes me that that's something that we all need to be thinking about is, in this past week of the orange sky, in this air that's not really breathable, in this pandemic that's affecting us in so many ways, we can choose to act for our community, we can choose to act for our earth. And I hope in this year, in, in these coming months for all of us, in this coming year for me, and for, and for Jews, that that is what we choose to do. And with that, I will turn it over to the next person.
And that will be Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. So on the 26th of August, I participated, I guess, by listening via Zoom for the Tri Valley Mayor Summit. And we had a number of mayors there who were giving their final, including our own mayor, their final summaries at the mayor's summit. John did an excellent job. The next day was the State of the County from Scott Haggerty, again, another individual who is making his last State of the County address, also an interesting presentation from Scott. presentation from Scott. I think if people haven't seen either of those, I'm sure that you can get them somewhere. But they're both very interesting. On the ninth, or sorry, the 10th of September, attended a Stop Waste meeting. And then as Councilmember Monroe mentioned, we had a homeless subcommittee meeting on the 11th where we discussed moving forward and what we, what the next community meeting is going to be all about. Regarding matters, I, a couple of at least, I think it's a couple of meetings ago, Councilmember Coomer brought up a request to look at traffic on Vancouver. And I guess I'd like to know if we couldn't get a status on that at some point. And I know that I've talked to city manager about Concanon, which is immediately behind my house, which is awful. As I mentioned to city manager, one day at about 11 o'clock, I was out in the backyard and there's somebody doing donuts in Concanon, where Epsom dead ends into Concanon. So this is at 11 o'clock and they, and people use the stop sign at Epsom as the starting gun for drag racing down Concanon. And I guess I'd like, if we could, to get some information back on both the traffic on Vancouver and Concanon. We got another email from a gentleman that lives on Vancouver with some information about what had happened to him recently with another driver on Vancouver. So is it possible to get move forward on what might be some of the ways that we can deal with speeding and the reckless driving on both of those streets? And maybe there are others in town.
And, and the answer is yes, we are in process on that. And Community Development Director Paul Spence and his crew are working on that information. One of the other things that you can do is call the police department's non-emergency line if you actually notice any sort of patterns to this behavior. Obviously, as they say, we can't be everywhere at once, but that information can be used. And in fact, we do targeted enforcement as well. We have noticed some very odd driving habits during the pandemic. I'm not sure if those are related, if that's causation or correlation. But we've had more sort of unusual driving activity. But yes, if we do, if we do have patterns there that that enforcement can help, we can certainly, if you give that information to us, we can make sure that we deploy what resources we have to work in those areas and keep an eye on things. And yes, I know we are working on that memo. And Mr. Spence, do you have a, an estimated time on bringing that back?
We actually, for your next council meeting, have an item on consent that we'll talk about traffic calming program. And so we, we have that. And then we were also independently working on a memo associated with these two streets for you. I would think within the next couple of weeks, we can get that back to you.
Few items coming back relatively quickly.
Perfect. Thanks. One other item that was on my mind even before the discussion around the property down in Arroyo is that is on short-term rentals. And I know that we had a discussion about this some months ago and we've, we have received additional complaints, I suppose, from the folks that originally brought the complaints about short-term rentals to us again a few weeks ago. And I just, and then it came up again with regard to the boutique winery. And I just wondered what the status of looking at some, the development of some ordinance around short-term rentals, what's the status of that?
And we have not forgotten that item. And as you know, obviously, we have a, a bunch of work programs that we had to jostle around this year. But I'm going to ask Mr. Spence again, I believe we've got it scheduled to come back to you, our second meeting in November. And Paul, is that the correct schedule on that one?
Yes, that's correct.
So you will see something before too long on that one. We've, we'll, we'll have that back in front of you.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all for me tonight. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner.
Couple of things. I'd like to second what Councilmember Coomer said about the lab to board meeting and the zero emissions fleet. And the way it looks like it's shaping up is it, do we go to battery versus hydrogen powered? And at the moment, the hydrogen powered is more expensive, but there's some uncertainty as to how quickly the cost curves would come down. But there is some thought that perhaps in the long term, hydrogen powered might be the way to go. And the key issue here is can, what's the range of these vehicles relative to the routes? But it was a very interesting presentation. And it's good to see that the, the bus company is focused on a climate change and what we're going to do about it. So there's some real potential there. I'd like to second what Councilmember Carling said about the mayor's summit. And I thought our mayor did a wonderful job. And I would encourage others to watch that. Speaking of mayor's things, I was, I had the honor of doing the mayor's report last week. So check that out if you haven't seen it. The, I've had several meetings with different kinds of business sectors about how to help them survive the pandemic. So those continue on a weekly basis. They're very spirited, I will say. And, but that did come, it was from those kind of meetings that we, you know, we did come up with the idea for the matching funds that was recently done. And I want to second what the city manager said. I thought the staff did a spectacular job on putting that program together pretty quickly. And it's good to see the number of businesses that are applying and being creative in what's there and what they're doing. Although I, I would hope that the communication would be such that the, the proportion of not allowed expenses would go down. And then finally, as Councilmember Monroe said, there's, spent a lot of time getting ready for the orientation session for the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. And thank you all for approving our expansion to the 48 people and beyond. So that's what I have.
Great. Well, thank you very much. You can actually see the State of the City, the, the Mayor Summit and Scott Haggerty's State of the County address. All of those are available on the Chamber website. So if you go to the Livermore Chamber, you can see all of them are, are there. On the September 10th, there was an Alameda County LAFCO meeting, the local agency formation commission, which decides what agencies and what would provide what services to specific regions. We had a great presentation from the Alameda County Resource Conservation District about much of the work that they're doing. Wildfire mitigation grants, stream restoration, rangeland management. So there's a lot of stuff that going on with them. I was also with, attended the 9/11 observance, which this is the 19th year that they had the observance. And this was the first one by remote. It was by Zoom. But still, it was, it was very well attended, which we must never forget. That's I said, it's hard to believe it's been 19 years. On the 14th today was the Alameda County Transportation Commission. The Projects and Programs Committee approved the preliminary design and engineering for the connection between Dublin Boulevard and North Canyon's Parkway. This is going to be a critical piece of infrastructure to have another east-west connection between the Tri Valley cities. So you don't have to go on the freeway. So that's moving ahead. That's going through the Crosby. Yes, Bing Crosby owned property here in Livermore between Dublin and Livermore. And that's going to be connecting North Canyon's Parkway to Dublin Boulevard. We also had the Planning Policy and Legislation Committee approved the request from Valley Link to the $400 million of the Measure BB funds that were approved in 2014. So now with the committee moving that ahead, it goes to the full commission on the the, the 24th of September, we're going to the full commission. Interestingly enough, two of the technologies that we're proposing for Valley Link are going to be electric and also hydrogen. It'll be the zero emission trains. They'll be removing about 30, 40,000 tons of greenhouse gases per year and reducing vehicle miles traveled by 100 million vehicle miles traveled every single year. So I'll be going to the meeting on the 24th. So stay tuned for that. Also, something I frequently quote, Sir Isaac Newton, the, if I can see farther, it is because I stand on the shoulders of giants. One of the giants and one of the trailblazers passed away last week. That was Helen Tercel. Helen Tercel was one of the first women mayors in California. And she was the mayor of Livermore in, in 1976. She passed away last week. She was a great inspiration for many people, including Libby Schaaf from Oakland was inspired by, by Helen Tercel, as was our Kathy Brown. So with that, I am going to adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be on the 28th. But I will adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of Helen Tercel, former mayor of Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good night.
Good night.